Good morning, everybody. It's Monday, June 17th, 2024 at 8:15 in the morning. We're going to call this meeting to order as authorized by Section 551071 of the Texas Government Code. This meeting may be convened and to close this executive session for the purpose of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any agenda item herein, and the city of Rallett preserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the order of business at any time prior to adjournment. And for in-person comments, registration forms, and instructions are available in the lobby, and the only agenda item-specific comments will be accepted. I don't see anybody in the audience, and we did not receive any input cards and no online public input forms regarding this meeting. So, we will go ahead and get started with the opening remarks and review of goals.
All right. Are we going up? Okay. Thanks. Is this controlling?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, man. Well, good morning, City Council. I think I'll stand here so I can see you all. That's a little weird, kind of look. I don't want to stare at Becky because that kind of gets a little weird. So, I'm honored to kind of kick this off a little bit. This is obviously my first full-budget preparation cycle with you. Last year was a little bit of a, you know, kind of a challenge race at the end. Let me start by thanking Kristoff, Wendy, Tara, Allison, the entire finance team. You know, this has been a little different in some ways, and of course, we obviously incorporate a lot of what we've done before. We weren't going to change everything because everything didn't need to be changed. So, let me start by thanking them because this getting us even to this point, and we're not done, obviously, but getting us to this point, I know, has at times been taxing, and I appreciate their willingness to look at something different and move in that direction. And they've embraced a lot of these changes, even when they didn't always understand them. I want to make sure I appreciate their efforts because they have been tremendous, and they're dedicated, probably one of the most dedicated teams I've ever seen. So, I have to make sure to acknowledge that because there were some changes this year. So, when we started this, when I, you know, as you think about the budget, there should be some goals. And the first goal in my mind was to improve the financial stability of the organization, right? We came in last year, and some of you remember some of the things that we looked at, and I don't want to imply that the wheels were falling off. That's not necessarily the case. As I mentioned even then, we were in a solid financial position with respect to fiscal year '24. It was really the future modeling, and again, modeling being what it is, is fluid, but still, you know, it posed some worries for all of us based on a number of things. But obviously, the number-one driver that I've heard from this council throughout the year has been no tax rate increase. If you change your mind, you can do that. We can show you, we'll show you the scenarios under which the funding will change, but I've kind of listened to you and really didn't hear a strong push that there was necessarily a need or desire to increase the tax rate. We heard that we needed to reduce something, that there was a drive to try to give some citizens relief in some areas where we could, and so, again, Wendy and the team looked at it, we worked out a different alignment, and we're able to offer a $0.21 reduction, I think that's the correct number, we settled on, a $0.21 reduction in the refuse rate. So, we're pretty happy about that. Not only did we switch carriers, we think we're going to get some enhanced services, but we're also able to do that at a reduced rate for the residents. A big driver is restoration of future general fund balance. That was hugely important, again, because we saw modeling where we were by fiscal year '28, and you'll see it later, spending down about 87% of the fund balance. So, that was troubling. Another goal for me, and I heard it from many of you in our deliberations, because, you know, we've talked about the budget now on our one-on-ones for about two to three months, has been the restoration of the RPD to a competitive market position. That really, for me, was kind of a major operational goal. When we looked around and surveyed the landscape, our fire department is well situated, open range, many of our classes have, you know, are competitive. There was some room to grow in some of the others, for sure. We'll address those, I hope, if not this fiscal year mid-year coming, meaning fiscal year '25. Everything I say when I say this year, let me be clear, is in reference to fiscal year '25. And so, those are kind of the major goals, and in talking to all of you, I think we kind of, those are aligned with a lot of the direction that I heard and a lot of the inputs that I heard. There's been a change in the financial paradigm here. What we've done is consolidate a number of the, what I call, general fund derivatives, things that were offshoots, where the general fund were funding them, and there was a reason for why they were done that way. I don't want to get into it as, I don't necessarily agree, but I won't say that it was wrong either. Let me be clear. By no means. It's just a matter of philosophy, where we had, for example, the Economic Development Fund, operating like we were an economic development corporation, and it really isn't. The general fund would send money over to that fund for it to operate. So, I consolidated all of those things. We brought back fund balances and operational costs. Now, we did specifically speaking to the Economic Development Fund, we left $1 million in there as part of your incentive opportunities, but in terms of all of the other operational costs, expenses, and funds, we've moved them into the general fund, the same with our inspection fee fund. We adjusted the general fund transfers, and that really goes hand-in-hand with the adjusted debt service practices. We could not have adjusted many of the general fund transfers because they were really funding a lot of capital items, purchases, and projects if you hadn't allowed us to do so, and so, those have borne significant fruit. I also thought, as you prepare a budget, you always want to be thinking about the future, and so, what are some future threats? And that term is in quotes because they're not necessarily bad things, but they'll have budget impact. We called them landmine planning. We've done some of that behind the scenes, and really, the construction staffing of Fire Station Six. No, that's not anti-fire. We're not picking on Tim. It's just a financial impact, pure and simple, nothing else, not to be construed as anything, but when you add potentially six to nine firefighters in a couple of years, there's a financial impact. Unlike their brethren in the police department where you can add one, or two, or three, when it comes to firefighters, you really kind of have to add them in significant numbers for it to make a difference, and it's just what it is. Staffing levels, keeping pace with the growth, that's going to be a challenge for us in the future, as it is today to some degree. We're lean, I like being lean, but as we grow and as you continue to push for improved services, enhanced programming, it will at some point require that we continue to enhance staffing levels across different groups. You've allowed us to do that last fiscal year. We're asking for some changes this fiscal year. You'll get to make some final decisions on some of that. I also caution, because again, the biggest load on our budget, general fund budget, of course, is personnel, so we have to be judicious in when and how we do that. State restrictions on city revenue sources, you all know that the state, whatever your political stance is, that just from a practical perspective, the state is restricting a lot of the city's abilities to find revenue sources or to utilize those sources. That is what it is, but it's also a position where it may have a negative impact on our ability or on our resources. Diversification of development, we are a larger bedroom-esque community. That's just the reality of our development pattern across the history. We continue, ED has done a good job, at least in my time here with Brittany and Charles, I want to thank them. We are diversifying, you are seeing that. You get to kind of be the final arbiter of what that looks like when they bring it in, but we have to continue to try to diversify that development. Can't just be a single family because... It can be, let me say this, it can be, if you so decide, but we always need to be aware as we hear conversations out in the world that we need this, we need that, or we need more money, there's nothing wrong with being a bedroom community if that's our identity. We just have to understand the advantages that come with that as well as the disadvantages. And a future thing that we always have to be mindful of is competitive public safety compensation market. The last several years have seen that market really take off, and I don't see it cooling off anytime soon, and we have to make sure we stay at the forefront of that to remain competitive, and that's going to be a financial impact. And so, again, these are not horrible, awful things. It's just my obligation to kind of tell you as we look forward, these are things that fiscal year '26 you can look forward to, and '27 and '28 that will kind of have a significant impact as we develop the budget. And so, I wanted to, last year, going to take a look back, you kind of remember where we looked at fiscal year '24 proposed. We kind of, you know, at that time, after some changes, we made net change of $1.3 million. You can see what I referenced earlier. Again, this is modeling, and in here, in fairness to this, it included some of the firefighters that we've now absorbed and some other things, and this is a lot of worst-case scenario. It really is. But obviously, what caused us concern was our ending reserves in fiscal year '28. That was a significant concern for us, as well it should have been. Here, I'll show you what we're looking at today. If you look at fiscal year '25, we're looking at a net change of $7 million now. Some of that is one-time money. We'll talk to you about what that is. It's identified for you. If you looked in your packet, Wendy's identified the one-time money, about $3 million versus the ongoing money, about $3 million. But nonetheless, the goal was to really kind of buttress that general fund reserves, and you can see we're projecting fiscal year '28 ending reserves of about $28 million, and fiscal year '29 about $25 million. Now, that's not bragging, that's not patting ourselves on the back. That was what we said we were going to do, but more importantly, that's actually, I'm showing you this for one really specific purpose. Those numbers wouldn't be possible if you hadn't allowed us to shift a direction in how we fund capital purchases here. We were going down the slope really fast, and you allowed us to change direction, and so, this is really to encourage you about the correctness of that direction and to show you, you know, I tell you in our meetings, oh, this is great, this is great, but here are the numbers to show you there is an impact to you allowing us to take a different strategic approach to debt, to capital purchases, and all of those things that we've talked about throughout this year. And so, that's why I wanted to show you this. And so, again, let's go into the goals of this session. We're going to introduce you to this fiscal year '25 budget, preliminary values, proposed rates, summaries of revenues and expenditures, and of course, we'll show you some departmental enhancement requests, and of course, significantly, a discussion on debt, capital purchases, and projects. Now, what is all of that for? It is to ultimately receive your feedback, input, direction, and hear your thoughts on what we've developed to date. So, one of the things that's going to be a little different, boards and commission funding, either the commissioners will be here or the staff liaisons will present, because, you know, heretofore, this kind of money has been automatically placed in the budget, and so, that becomes administrative. And the boards and commissions report to the city council. They do not, they don't report to the city manager. The staff reports to the city manager, but the boards and commissions don't. And what has happened, unfortunately, historically, has been kind of this scope creep where the boards and commissions, as well-intended as they are, have gotten to a point where they're creating a lot of events and all, and it isn't to pick on because some should by virtue of their charge, and that's the point. Some of the boards and commissions have gone outside of their charge. You all obviously had an initiative where you were attempting to align it back in. This is really just in alignment with your initiative to say, okay, boards and commissions, the council determines what happens and the funding associated therein, not the city manager. A grant awardee funding, we're going to ask you, Kristoff's going to show you those applicants. You will decide if or how much you want to award those grant applicants. Departmental supplemental requests, you've seen the presentations in your packet. Each department director will give you their spiel on why they should get all of the wonderful things they're asking for. Again, there's money available for it. We've made some administrative enhancement decisions already. We will show you those as well. I would caution, they're great salespeople, and they're all compelling, and they're all right. They need every bit of what they're asking for in most of these requests. I don't think any of it is terribly superfluous, but I don't think we can fund it all, even if the money says we can. I think we have to be mindful that there are going to be some future challenges facing us. So, that's to kind of dampen their great salesmanship because they are really good, and it is really all legitimate. A big thing that we're going to do is prioritize capital projects and opportunity purchases. We're calling them opportunity purchases, kind of wish list stuff. There's the CapEx. If you look at the spreadsheet we sent you, that's the stuff that we just kind of have to do. That's the paradigm shift that you allowed that has really supported that general fund growth and sustainable positioning. So, that's kind of just what we have to do. Unless you change your minds, that's kind of the stuff that's going to hit our capacity number first. Secondly, of course, are the projects just as importantly, but it isn't really for us to determine the prioritization of those things. And so, Kristoff has developed a ranking sheet for you. He will go into more detail about it. It's a weighted ranking system, and as we do that presentation, when it concludes, we're going to ask you to rank the order of priority for these projects, and then the opportunity purchases, the wish list stuff. The reason is, we haven't finalized, they can't yet, they don't have all the data that they need from other entities. We haven't finalized our true capacity number. They're close, but when we get that number, some projects may make the cut and some may not, and so, really, it's not, certainly not our position to tell the world what should and shouldn't. That's your decision, that's your authority, and so, that's why we're asking you to rank those things. Last but not least is to see if there are any additional budget initiatives that you may have as council members that we didn't hit throughout this process. And so, with that, unless there are any questions or anything, that's kind of, you know, grateful to be here. I thank the staff for the work, and we'll get into it now unless there are any questions. Okay, thank you.
All right. Let's get into, first item is boards and commissions' presentations. Who's going to be leading that?
Yeah, I know. I can't.
First, who's our first person?
Yeah.
In alphabetical order, Arts and Humanities. I believe Laura is here.
Good morning. How are y'all?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. So, our 2024 budget, oh, great. See, is it this one?
Laura, you can sit down if you want.
Well?
Yeah, let's sit down.
Oh, I can sit down? Oh, thank God. All right, pass out. Okay, so...
Don't pass out. I know we're in a fire station, but please don't pass out.
I won't. Okay, so, the 2024 budget, the Young Artists Exhibit was under budget due to a lack of entries, and the K through six, the writing contest was under budget due to not having second-place winners for the poetry and short works division. Rallett Sings was under budget because there were no group entries. The Trombone Thanksgiving initially did not have a planned budget, but the commission voted to move the funding from the supply fund to purchase sheet music for the performers. The Artist Exchange did not spend all of the budgeted dollars because the commission did not host more than one event. The commission may spend more for their promotional funding on tablecloth and other items used for outreach events and on supplies for award ribbons and certificates. Now, our 2025 budget, which is what we're asking for money for this year, the commission is asking to provide an additional $500 towards grants due to the large number of grant applications. Nine were received from the schools this past year. The same amount of funding for the Young Artist Exhibit. The writing contest and photography contest is being, the same amount of funding for the Young Artist Exhibit, the writing contest, and the photography contest is being requested, and the additional $1,500 is requested for Rallett Sings due to the anticipation, anticipated increases which will arise if the event is moved to a different location. Last year, there was not a budget for Trombone Thanksgiving, but the commission would like to continue that event and set aside funding if additional sheet music is needed. The commission would like to increase the frequency of their Artist Exchange events and is asking for $1,000 this year. We need to discuss the mayor's award and how it will be distributed. When Todd Gattel was mayor, he purchased pieces of art himself and from the spring and fall shows for artists around Texas. When Mayor Dana Bashan took over, she was not inclined to purchase the art herself and instructed the organization and the city to have the award funding earmarked from the Arts and Humanities Commission budget. Is this how council would like to proceed to fund the awards for this organization?
Thank you for that question.
You're welcome.
So, every council member has a allocation in their budget for community outreach. I consider this to be a community outreach type of allocation. So, I think that $250 would probably be best more appropriate to come out of the mayor's community outreach budget.
Okay, so, we can take that out of our budget? So, we're asking for 250 less?
So, you'll just have to, I guess, artists around Texas will have to remind the mayor about that so that the mayor can work with the city secretary to make that allocation.
Do you want me to let Lisa know that?
That'd be great.
Or Loriann know that?
That would be great, yes.
Okay, so, I'll let Loriann know that you'll be handling that instead of Arts and Humanities. Let's see, and every year, the citizens enjoy the complimentary calendar that we do featuring the artwork from our competitions, our, they're not really competitions, but our, our events, and, let's see, I lost my place, sorry. And the city offices get multiple requests from citizens each year wanting to know when they're going to be ready to pick up. The calendar also promotes the AHC's events and contests in addition to the city events, city council meetings. Lastly, the commission is requesting $730 for supplies such as name badges, shirts, and awards. And that is my presentation. Do you have any questions about our budget? Go ahead.
Just a quick one. So, if I've got this right, you spent your actual spend in 2024, $16,157. You're asking for almost 22. That's over a 25% increase when you didn't even hit the 20,000 last year. I'm just...
We're anticipating, we're moving Rallett Sings to a different venue. We're calling the high school to see how much it would be for the auditorium and other venues. We were asked to move it from Freedom Place Church to a more public building, a more...
That's still $1,500. That doesn't write from $3,500 to $5,000. Is that what I'm seeing? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just, I guess, I hate to be the budget guy who says use it or lose it, but, you know, I don't know that I really am supporting that big of an increase based on where...
We also had trophies that were left over that we had for different events, and now we've run out of those. We're all out of our ribbons and our trophies for Rallett Sings. We need to replenish that, and...
So, part of the unused budget is the photography contest, which takes place in August before the end of fiscal year.
Yes.
So, that's a piece of the unused allocation from 2024's budget that's not used yet.
Oh, okay.
And there's an anticipation that possibly the calendars, is that right, Laura? The calendars may increase this year?
How many calendars do we print?
Laura, how many calendars do we print?
We typically work with a printer on a price, and then they let us know depending on the paper price that we choose and everything, how many we can get typically.
And they're sure we had no calendars left?
That's interesting because paper calendars are decreasing in popularity, I think, so it's interesting that you have that much demand.
So, the new request taking out the 250 from the mayor's award is 21679.
We will be grateful for any budget that you give us and make it work.
Absolutely, understood.
Well, I really, I really did enjoy the Trombone Thanksgiving. I thought that that was a wonderful thing, that music is such a part of our lives, and I thought that was a really wonderful event, so I definitely would like to see that continue.
I'm certainly fine with the 21,679 going to the commission for fiscal year '25. Of course, you know, if y'all don't use all of the budget, then that will just be rolled over into the next general fund, and just like this is, so, you know, we want our Arts and Humanities Commission to actually do these programs and events, and so, y'all need a budget to do that. And going from 20,000 from last year to 21679 is not a substantial increase in my mind in terms of the budget allocation. Council, is there any opposition to the 21679 request or any other questions regarding that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. You all have a great day and enjoy your budget meeting.
You want to stay for the rest? Help us out?
No, thank you.
All right. Next one is, sorry, you missed Economic Development.
Economic Development?
Yeah.
Goals.
This one was a bit interesting.
Mm-hmm. Understand.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Brittany Fard, Director of Economic and Community Engagement. I'll be presenting on behalf of the Economic Development Advisory Board. This is going to be a relatively simple presentation. Historically, Economic Development Advisory Board hasn't had a very large budget and has actually been folded into the Economic Development Department. From what we can tell from our records, last year, we had about $750 in that line item, and then what we've been able to put together from receipts from the previous year is about $500. So, what I'm coming with you today is a very simple request for $500 for the Economic Development Advisory Board. Our costs, you can see what we've spent our actuals on thus far in FY '24 and what we're requesting for next year. Meeting supplies, that would be things like printing, packets, documentation, things like that. Recognition awards, I'm lumping that in. We did, when we have members roll off, we like to give them a little thank you plaque, but this also encapsulates if we have new members, name badges, things of that nature. And then, every year, we do an annual thank you luncheon for EDAB members right around the holiday time where we take them out and thank them for their service. And so, all of that put together so far this year is right under 500. I'm pretty sure I can keep it under there next year, so I respectfully request $500 for EDAB. Any questions?
So, the recognition awards encapsulates the badges?
Name badges, and then if anyone rolls off a little thank you plaque for their service.
I like the way you budget.
Short sweetened to the point.
And low.
And low. You'll notice, you'll notice a theme in most of my budget presentations.
There's not, yeah.
You want to do all the budgets?
No, ma'am.
I think I have a more foundational question, which is for David. With the boards and commissions' budgets that we're looking at, when it comes to how this money gets spent within the operation of that board and commission, do we approve every expense that they're spending? Or by approving the budget, are we approving their sub-budgets, or how does that work?
So, the way we, you know, we've talked about this, trying to shift how we've done this in the past, and in my mind, you're approving these categories, and the board or commission is going to be able to spend that money within that category. Did I answer that question?
I think so. So, if there's, if there's a change, so, the Arts and Humanities that we just looked at, for example, if there's a change in how much it costs to hold the Rallett Sings event, and it costs more than the $5,000 that we just discussed and allocated, what happens?
They need the budget, and there's nothing that happens. You haven't appropriated them additional money. Now, technically, I have the certain latitude in the budget, and I probably would approve a certain amount of overage, but technically, they should stay within that budget. So, they'll have to, they may have to cut some funding for something else, and I'm not technically, I'm not generally inclined to say, okay, let me give you additional money.
Right.
Council said 21.5 or whatever it is, and so, technically, I could, but am I inclined to do so? No, not really.
And I'm speaking more within, within the cap of the budget that they have, can they...
Absolutely.
Some of that...
That's something that they have to decide upon as a board.
Okay.
You know, again, we're not interjecting ourselves into that conversation unless they're seeking to create something new.
Okay. So, yeah, so I'm looking at like this budget, and I'm saying, well, if the recognition awards cost $200 because they have an inordinate amount of people leave the board, can they move some of the food budget to pay for those plaques, right?
Absolutely, yeah. No different than how we do it operationally.
Just making sure that is kind of still working the same.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
It would just mean they'd have to go to Chick-fil-A.
Yep.
Well, Brittany has experience with that.
I'm very well-versed with all of the local food establishments around Fire Station Two.
I did have one question. So, are there any educational opportunities for our board that they might need? I don't know, I don't know exactly what kind of educational opportunities they might need, but I want to be sure that all of our board members are well-educated and understand clearly what they're doing.
To tag on to that real quick, EDAB historically would go to the, what conference is that? Charles isn't here. You haven't been there yet. I'm trying to remember it. There's a conference that EDAB goes to, and I can't remember the name of it.
I don't know which one to go to.
And that's part of, I think, that's kind of wrapping into your question.
So, again, we didn't develop these budgets for the boards and commissions unless we just couldn't reach anyone, and so... And so I, I don't have an answer to why they didn't include training money in there. I mean, they've actually pretty more, much more knowledgeable about it than we are. So I don't have an answer for why it's not in there, except to say we didn't necessarily develop the budgets. Certainly, if you want to set aside some money for training, we can try to find a way to do that, but we left this to them because, again, this wasn't our place necessarily to inject ourselves. Your point is well taken, but, but I don't know why there aren't, uh, training allocations in their budget.
I, I'm, I, I don't know that they have ever considered having a training budget or, I, I mean, things are new.
Not necessarily training, rather this, this conference that, um...
The TEDC conference?
The TEDC.
Texas Economic Development Council.
Does the board get it out? Just, I know Charles does.
Board members, and this is not that. This is, this is a different, it's one where Rallat sponsors.
So just as a, just as a, a general comment, I, I don't know that, that all of the boards and commissions in the, in the past have even considered, oh, well, maybe I need to learn more, or maybe I need, uh, maybe I need training about X, Y, or Z. Um, and so maybe we don't address that this year, but that is certainly something that I do think that we should look at moving forward.
The other point to that point is there, it doesn't mean we can't offer internal training opportunities.
That's true.
That's certainly something we can keep an eye towards as we move forward. And to your point, even still, next year we can try to work with them to incorporate training opportunities that may require funding.
Yeah. I just, I, I really love the boards and commissions and feel like it's really important that we continue to raise the, their education and professionalism.
Well, you said these requests came from the boards, but I'm on the E-DAB, and I don't remember the board discussing this.
No, ma'am, we reached out to the chair, pardon me, the chair and the vice chair, and we didn't hear anything back. So when the deadline hit, we put this together.
So we had to develop some of them.
Based on receipts from the last three fiscal years that I can find in Munis.
And I think that might fall on, on us as council liaisons as we're meeting with them to, to ask them, is there, is there things that you need to know that you don't know, and then go forward, start budgeting those things?
I appreciate that because really what I'm trying to do is take staff and put us in the right position, right? The boards and commissions, it was a great deal of conversation about it. They report to the city council. Now, they don't tell us what to do, but we are there to assist, right? And we're there to help further that mission. We're not there to tell them what to do either necessarily. And so that's, I'm trying to just put us in our proper place of support. Uh, so I appreciate the comment. Again, with respect to budget and for training, we can train internally a lot of these boards and commissions. We can bring in outside, uh, resources if we don't have it internally. So there's a lot we can do. So I don't want you to think that that point won't be made, and we won't try to address it during this coming fiscal year.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Golf Advisory Board? I know our Animal Shelter Board is here. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. Mayor, council, staff. So this is our first time to be in front of the, the Budget Committee, if you will. Really have not had anything in the past that we would have brought, uh, in front of you guys. But when we were meeting last with Kristoff, he was telling us that, you know, this was an opportunity if we wanted to add budget items to, uh, next year's budget, you know, this is the time to introduce those items. Uh, so we kind of tossed it around a little bit, came up with the idea that we've got something that is out on the golf course that is not being maintained the way it should be maintained. Uh, and we always look to American Golf to do those things, but this particular item kind of falls out of their purview, if you will. Uh, and it kind of comes as a side effect of a relationship that kind of broke apart when the developer developed Waterview Community and the city took over the, the golf course. And that happened 20-something years ago. Uh, so there are, one of the things the developer did when they developed the Waterview property was they created a lot of water view, okay? They created a lot of lakes. And the reason that the developer created a lot of those lakes is they wanted to enhance particular lots or particular pieces of property. And so they would build a lake that would enhance the golf course, but it really would create an environment for a homeowner that backed up to that lake to have a nice view, you know, a nice country setting, all of those types of things. So as time went on, the developer developed the neighborhood, they built the lakes that were in the HOA part of the neighborhood, and they put fountains and, you know, maintenance, ongoing updates to those lakes. So there are 14 lakes on the property at Waterview. Not, five of those fall in the HOA, and the HOA maintains those lakes at a very high level all the time. So if you drive into Waterview, you drive into the facade, you see a very nice, beautiful lake with a water park and all that kind of stuff. So there are five of those lakes that the HOA maintains. There are nine on the golf course that haven't been maintained since day one, basically. 10 years ago, I brought that to the board, the Golf Advisory Board. We put fountains on most of those lakes, and we had to go to Encore and have electrical run, and we, we did a bunch of work to make those lakes and fountains possible, knowing what the HOA had done and how they maintain them. What we didn't put in place was basically any kind of a maintenance program to maintain those things once we put them in. So that was kind of missed opportunity on our part, but that's kind of what we're, we're talking about here today. We're talking about a preventative maintenance contract for all of these fountains that we put in all of these nine lakes that are on the golf course. This is not something that was there when the contract was written between American Golf and basically the city of Rallat, okay? So this is something that we, as a Golf Advisory Board, added 10 years ago, but 10 years of no maintenance, guess what? Most of those fountains and circulating pumps don't work anymore. So this is what we're talking about here. We haven't, like I said, we haven't done a budget before, so we don't have a specific budget item, but I went to the HOA board, or actually the HOA staff, and asked, you know, okay, what does it take for us to maintain these lakes on an ongoing basis? So I came up with some numbers that it takes to do that. And so we came up with about $20,000 that it's going to take to maintain these lakes, and that includes several different things. Probably about 12,000 of it is going to be an, an annual contract with a maintenance company that comes once a quarter and checks all of these fountains and all these circulating pumps and timers and electrical and cir, you know, just all the things that go into that. They will come out once a quarter and do that kind of maintenance. Uh, and then, um, periodically, these, these are lakes that have no flow in them, okay? So there's no water flowing in and no water flowing out. So they're very stagnant. So the, the fountains and circulating pumps help with that, but there are going to be times when you have really hot times of the year, and you'll get an algae bloom, okay? And to, to affect that algae bloom, you've got to have somebody that comes out and treats the lakes with chemicals, you know, that, that actually take care of that. The HOA does that all the time. I mean, we have somebody constantly on staff that's taking care of those things. So we want to add that, that feature to these things that are out on the golf course that are not a part of the HOA. So preventative maintenance contract for lake, lake fountains on the Waterview golf course. Fountains and circulating pumps installed 10 years ago. No maintenance has been done. Preventive maintenance needed to keep these things functioning as they should be functioning. Timers need to be reset after power outages. All of those types of things, you know, happen. So we're asking for $20,000 a year annually. About 12,000 to 15,000 would be the annual maintenance contract. The rest of it would be four or 5,000 for a timer that goes out, you know, and it has to be replaced. A fountain needs to, a new pump, whatever. You, you've got some dollars that need to be spent on replacement, even though you're doing an ongoing maintenance contract. And then above and beyond that is somebody to come out and, you know, periodically check the pH balance of the lake, make sure that the lakes are healthy for the fish and, you know, all the things that are living in that environment. So $20,000 for that, that includes 22 fountains and pumps, okay? So that's, that's a lot of equipment out there. We could possibly use or some kind of a partnership with the HOA vendor for this, for this ongoing maintenance so that, you know, it's being managed by the staff that's on the ground there at the Waterview Community. We have two people on staff, you know, five days a week, all year long. So they're already in that business. They know what to do. They know the vendors to deal with, all of that kind of stuff. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of an example of what happens when you don't have lake maintenance. So this is on hole number two. This is a lake, um, that's been there ever since the golf course was built. Uh, it's, it's one of the nine that are actually on the golf course. Uh, so this lake got so bad that literally, um, kids were playing baseball in the yard that backs up to this lake, and the balls would go out there and they would just sit on top of the moss. They, they wouldn't even sink down. Uh, you can see trash all over the top of this lake. So this is another view of the same lake, and you can see the homes in the background. These are, this lake really was an enhancement to the property value of the homeowners that backed up to this lake. And this is pretty consistent all the way through the Waterview Community. You know, any of these lakes that are out on the golf course, at one time or another, they get in this condition. The idea of these lakes was to promote the property values of the houses that backed up to it. It was supposed to create a nice, natural environment, a lot of open space, you know, a beautiful place to live. But this particular situation got really, really bad. So this is what the lake looked like after we cleaned it up. You can see the fence line going down the right-hand side of that picture where homeowners, homes back up to that lake. So basically, when we take care of these lakes, it enhances the property value of those homes in that neighborhood. Any one of those homes that sells that, that lake is beautiful to look at and somebody wants to live there, when that house sells, it sells for a premium, which enhances the square footage of all the houses in Waterview and then going outside the Waterview Community as well. It's kind of like dropping a pebble in a pond. That, that effect of cost per square foot just kind of trickles out, you know, into the community. So this is the same lake. You can see the fence all, going all the way down the left side. So this is really, this doesn't affect the golf course so much. It doesn't affect the golfers so much, even though it's kind of a nice thing for them. It's really about the homeowners that back up to these. So this is the first time we've ever come to you guys and asked for, uh, budget items. Uh, this is the one that we came up with, and, you know, we'd like you guys to help us fund it.
All right.
Any questions?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, I could make a couple of comments. Brad, thanks for the presentation. Uh, just to, uh, I guess be clear, I, I am on the Golf Advisory Committee. We've talked about this a lot. I am in real, uh, complete favor of doing this. Um, the, this is more than just the golf course. I think we all recognize, uh, Waterview is one of our most vibrant communities, one of our most walkable communities. This is the kind of quality of life things that I think is the city's responsibility to, uh, at least aid as much as they can. So I, I'm, I'm in complete support of this. One thing I want to make sure, uh, we have, you're, you're asking for the $20,000 for the maintenance. I would want to make sure if we needed to add a little bit to that, and I don't know to be a lot, but I want to make sure we get everything running well also.
So this is kind of putting the cart before the horse, right? So we are about to make a request. We have a fund, a golf fund...
Right.
...that obviously we're going to lose over a period of time. I think there's, Kristoff, how many dollars left in that fund? 50?
59.
59, something like that. We're probably going to request 30,000 of that money to put all of those fountains in good working condition again. Uh, and, you know, then once we do that, then we would like to implement this maintenance program to keep it running across the board, you know, into the future.
Kristoff, is that the right way to set this up from your point of view?
I certainly think that, that prudent account is for capital expenditures.
Okay, yeah.
If it'd be more appropriate.
Like, like I said, I, I think it's a great idea. I hope everybody supports it, but, but I do want to make sure that everybody understands there is going to be a little bit of a upfront to just get, like so many things, uh, to get it where it's supposed to be.
If it hadn't been maintained in 10 years...
Pardon me?
If it hasn't been maintained in years...
It's been longer than that. They're, they're in bad shape, and, and the, the HOA, the golf course, really nobody has the wherewithal to get this all going the right way without, without the city's help. So, uh, again, I just want to encourage everybody to, to maybe get on board with this.
Quick question. How many homes does that affect? How many homes does that impact?
So back up to the golf course, 552 homes. There's 1,742 homes in the community. Honestly, when you're talking about cost per square foot, it affects every home in that community, 1,742 homes. But actually back up to the lakes, probably 100.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can we, uh, do we know for certain that this is not part of American Golf's responsibility for maintenance? Do we know?
So when we put these in, we actually used city funds to put them in 10 years ago, well after the establishment of the contract with American Golf, right?
Okay.
Uh, so we asked American Golf for permission to put these things in, okay? They allowed us to put them in. We put them in. When we first put them in, it was fantastic. I mean, the first year was great.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Kristoff has been researching this. I think he's got an answer for the contract.
The specific standard, I apologize for my voice is kind of going loud. I have nothing I can do about that. But it says, and it says, "All lakes and ponds, streams shall be maintained in a safe and sanitary manner and in good appearance." That's all it says.
That's our contract with AGC.
That's our contract with AGC.
And it doesn't matter when these ponds went in? There's nothing, no provisions in there that cover the existing condition is what is to main, maintain? It's just...
Well, this is, of course, before, as you said, before all these improvements. It certainly doesn't talk anything about maintaining fountains and, you know, it just says "safe and sanitary manner."
Okay.
So how do you sort of define that?
Right.
There's a lot of room there.
We could probably get into a, a debate with AGC. I think the language is broad enough, but, but the value of that and how long and how protracted that discussion proves to be is a different matter.
Just wanted the context.
Yep.
That's all. I'm, I'm certainly leaning towards supporting this because if, if there's nothing being done now to maintain it, we know how American Golf is and how lovely they are, their maintenance practices. Um, I, I, I see this as, I mean, something needs to happen with these ponds, so...
I think my question's more of a, a process question. There's no doubt that we need to maintain our capital assets that the city has, but is this really a Golf Advisory Board responsibility?
Right.
Or is it a staff responsibility? Because it's a capital expense item. To me, this is no different than the Parks Advisory Board coming and saying, hey, we need a new parks facility, right? Or we need to, we need a new playground. Why would we allocate money to the Parks Advisory Board to build a new playground, which is essentially what we're doing here, especially when it comes to a maintenance contract?
Mm-hmm.
In my opinion, a board should not be administering a maintenance contract.
So, so a couple of points. Number one, let's start in the reverse order. You're right, they won't administer it. Uh, we have boards that have administered maintenance contracts. We have boards that have, that are administering program contracts. Those things are going to stop.
Mm-hmm.
If you approve this, we will administer this repair renovation. Should we, or should you allocate this to the board is a, a different question. You have historically, uh, part of how some of these things have happened with the development of this course is because, and, and as was alluded to, you've developed, or you've given this board funds for capital improvement. So, so that's what makes this very distinct from the Parks Board that you referenced and other things, where you'd allocate money to the, the operations budget, because you kind of historically have done this with this board. That said, if you want to put some money somewhere in the Parks budget to enhance maintenance, we can, but what also complicates this is what was mentioned earlier, is that there is a contract with AGC for maintenance things, and while it's not clear and the contract could have been written better, one could argue that they have a maintenance obligation for these things. Now, that's not going to get it fixed. And so how long that conversation, again, as I said earlier, how protracted that discussion And so how long that conversation, again, as I said earlier, how protracted that discussion is, is a different matter. And you probably need to address this sooner than later. So all of that said, if you want to allocate this money and appropriate it in the parks budget, enhance that budget by 20,000, fine, no problem. You put it there, we're still going to administer it. And that's going to be a significant change. While the budget is there and they're requesting it, we're going to administer any maintenance contract. If they wanted to go out and maintain three other pumps, we're going to do that now. The board shouldn't be doing that. They recommend, and we will take the action. So.
To me, just because we've always done it that way is not a good reason to keep doing it that way. And I totally agree with Jeff that this should be in the parks budget, not in the board's budget. I think this is one of those cases you were talking about where a board has gone beyond the scope of their original mission.
Let me address this. I want you to say, the reason you don't hear me going, yes, it should be in the parks budget, because I'm not sure the city should be paying for this. So I don't want to, I don't want to be on record as saying I've taken a position that AGC shouldn't be paying for this. I will defer, I will defer to the council's prerogative to say, we need something fixed. And wherever you put it, it's fine with me.
My preference would be we bring it up to standards and we still have ongoing negotiations with American Golf. See, at some point, they take that under their umbrella.
Happy to try that, too?
To be fair to the Golf Advisory Board, you know, I, I, this is obviously one of their things that they're just tasked with looking at the conditions of the course and all of that playability and so on. This request has never come from the staff level. So they're, they have a request that no one else has requested. So I'm not really going to point at them and say they're going beyond their scope. I'm just really, they're, they're asking for something that should have been asked through a different avenue years ago. And so, you know, whether and how it's enacted is a different question. Certainly would recommend that we pull the $30,000 out of the $69,000 from the existing golf fund at a minimum to pay for bringing up, turning these fountains back on, replacing broken parts, whatever it is that we need to do. Put the $30,000 into, transfer that to parks budget and have them administer those repairs through whatever contract they need to issue. And then let's discuss the reoccurring requests, the reoccurring $20,000 request. There was a suggestion on the table about not doing that, just allocating the necessary funding upfront to get those things repaired and fixed now and then work with AGC to see if they can administer a annual maintenance program for these fountains. I'll just leave it there and open it up. Suggestions on that? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just chime in real quick. One, and I can't see in the future and I can't say what other people are going to do, but Mr. Hall used the, the term protracted if we get talking with American Golf. I think that's probably optimistic. It's, look, it's just, I, I think we need to sort of take that, right or wrong, right or wrong. I think that needs to be sort of taken out of the conversation right now. This is about fixing what is important, what needs to be fixed. And just for some folks that maybe think, oh, this is just a golf course thing, keep in mind there's another five or six ponds that are actually Waterview property, HOA property. So again, I think that, I don't want to get caught up in the whole American Golf, what they may or may not do. I, I don't think that really moves this forward the way it needs to move forward right now, so.
One other point, you know, this, again, if this is done right and this is taken care of in the right way, this is going to enhance property value, okay? This is a return on investment. This, this isn't just a spend, okay? You're eventually going to reap the benefits of that coming back. Our property value is going up, revenues to the city going up.
Well, as you said, it's not necessarily a playability issue. It's a aesthetic issue for the entire community.
Exactly, and it's, you know, I live, you know, backing up to the golf course, backing up to a green. I love where I live. It's open space. In my world, it's utopia, okay? I sit out on my patio every evening. Even on 100-degree days, there's a nice breeze coming up off Lake Ray Hubbard, blowing up the fairways. It is a great place to live, okay? I feel so sorry for the people whose homes back up to those lakes, because what they were expecting was utopia and what they got was a dump, okay?
Well, I'm, I'll just say, I'm not as concerned about the aesthetic thing as I am about the health situation related to a stagnant pond. And, you know, West Nile is predominant here in North Texas. So, I mean, I, that is what's more on my mind about seeing a sitting pond with algae bloom growing on it and no circulation is the West Nile potential. So for me, that, that's why I, I think we, my recommendation is to, is to move forward with, at a minimum, moving the 30,000 out of the $69,000 existing golf fund to Parks and Recreation to have them cover, to pay for the fountain replacement program. And then we'll discuss a preventative maintenance program going forward, unless y'all still want to allocate the $20,000 as an annual expense.
So I.
Go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I agree with you.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I, I agree with council membership that we, we need to have an ongoing maintenance program for these lakes because of the health and safety issues. And if at some point, it would be my hope that we could negotiate with AGC or, or any entities out there to help us run those. But if I, I, I just feel like if I want to go out and play golf, I don't want to, to worry about mosquitoes or, or any of that kind of stuff.
Nutrias, snakes, all sorts of stuff.
Absolutely, and so I, I would be in favor of funding the, the maintenance.
Well, I'm in favor of, my, my point I made earlier is I'm in favor of getting up to standards. And I think that's a great selling point at some time down the road to American Golf. We didn't come and ask you to shell out all this money to get it up to standards. What we're asking you is to take it on at a future date into their maintenance program.
Well, arguably, we're not asking either. We're telling them because that's what's in the contract and they have to abide by it. I mean, we have to kind of change our approach with American Golf. Otherwise, nothing's going to happen. I mean, let's just look at precedent.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the recommendation. This is the type of stuff I think we need boards and commissions to come tell us more, is that where there are major shortcomings in staff operations, city operations, whatever, things that we can do better, that we can fund and fix, that's what we need to do.
I was in, under the assumption that American Golf was probably taken care of.
I don't want to say this is a staff shortcoming. Let me say this.
Yes.
We don't actually need to move the money. It's capital project. We'll leave it there. We'll take it as a project. We take this as an appropriation. The money is in that fund. We can take the money from that fund.
Great.
And, and get this done.
Okay, so, okay, so they're not moving the 30,000, but just recognizing that 30,000 to be spent on upfront costs associated with the, the pond, whatever.
Yeah, we'll get them running.
I, I wasn't really clear on whether council, y'all wanted to move forward with going for a $20,000 a year allocation or not doing that at this time. I, I want to, I heard, I hear, I hear probably a no here, just going with the upfront.
I'm fine with doing it. At some point, that could be transitioned over.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, that's why I want to clarify, because I didn't really understand.
I'm, I'm for it.
Okay, all right, great. And then you're for it, for it, I know you're for it. Okay, all right. Do you, is that clear?
Very clear.
All right.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much, guys.
All right, who's next?
Parkson, right?
All right. Yeah, I had a schedule right behind.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, everybody, how you doing?
Thanks for being here.
Oh, no problem. Thanks for having me, appreciate it. So I'm Rebecca Day. I'm here to represent the Parkson Recreation Advisory Board. Unfortunately, Dolores Penning is on vacation, so I'm filling in for her right now. Otherwise, she as the chair would be here and I'm the, I'm the vice chair today. So I'm here to represent the board and just to talk to you a little bit about some of our missions and goals and what the budget will be used for. So board members, oh, sorry. Did this? Ah, okay. Board members, enhance the parks advocacy through strategic marketing, direct involvement, and promoting volunteerism across the community and events and programs. We engage in and reviewed park dedications, memorials, by supporting the funding for key parks repairs and facilitate the widely reached event promotions of the parks. We actively participate in and volunteer in major community events, including seasonal festivities and wellness activities such as our wellness walks and hope to be soon Walk with the Dog. We foster ecotourism by organizing activities and highlighting outdoor educations in Parks and Trails, including paddling events and educational night hikes, which we had great presence with us last year with all of our Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and Ventures this last time. We have advanced support for bond projects and project initiatives by mobilizing community engagement, educational outreach, and providing feedback for collection of parks improvements. So the next one, I want to just share with you what our budget was in 2023, 2024, and where we are. So we spent $1,970 and 84 spends for a total spend of the budget. Our budget was $4,000. This was the first year that we ever had a budget back in 2023, 2024. And this is where, where we were for spending. But some of the things to note that we didn't get included in the budget were used by the previous was we did bring in for a trunk or treat event, $492, which was used in 2023 budget. We brought that forward. So that was one thing I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that was utilized by the parks budget. And then we also had Arbor Day trees that were purchased for reforestation out of the reforestation fund, which was $2,800, approximately a little over that. That is not included in that budget. So that's our spend for this year. So we had night hike, that was $130. The Arbor Day, that, that's just a couple, just a little bit of extra water cost that we had. Diversity celebration, we held a booth and gave away seeds to the community, which was very well received, very well received in that. And then we had our animal fishing tournament and the fishing prizes for that tournament and then the Christmas parade. And that, that money was allocated for passing out candy on the floats. We used every bit of it, to the, down to the last Tootsie Roll, too. So this year's budget, this is what we're proposing. It's a request for a $4,000 budget to support the following. So for new, before and previous budgets, we've never allocated dollars for badges and shirts to be presented to our new board members. This is the appropriate shirt and badge that any member would get. So we'd like to incorporate that into the budget, as well as a table, an event table cover when we're doing things at our Arbor Day event or at the, at the fishing tournament or any other places that we are present. We'd like to have a decent table cover that has our name on it. We have a banner that took some wind, that's not doing so well. So that is the one thing we'd like in addition. Annual fishing tournament is $1,000 to secure our fishing advocate. I'd like to ask for that so that we can take on the Sand Bass Fishing Tournament. The Arbor Day Trees Event, this is $1,200 to get trees associated if those can't come out of the reforestation funds. And then the trunk or treat Christmas parade, these are things that we participate in and that money goes solely for candy and every bit of it is used, if not more. There's actually additional candy that's brought in by members. And then miscellaneous is for the diversity day, for the seeds, the paddling event, and the night hike. And those are just some miscellaneous, like bringing water for people that are attending those events because it can get kind of warm and so forth. What questions do you guys have?
So I'm just, I, I want to be very clear. The Arbor Day trees.
Yeah.
Need to come out of the reforestation fund.
Okay.
Not, not the, not the Parks Recreation Fund. I don't even know how that was even allowed to go on this request. We have, I don't know how big our reforestation fund is, but I know it's pretty big. And so there's absolutely no reason for the Parks Recreation Advisory Board to have to pay for, to pay for trees. So I'll just state that.
And I'm not sure that they did last year either, by the way.
They didn't.
Yeah.
It came out of the reforestation fund and, yeah, so, and that, that is how it should be. So then, but it does say there involves staff. So do we know what, any of y'all know what of that amount is staff-related? And, or should we just X out the?
No, no, I mean, that's not a worry. I mean, they may have shown that just to show that there is a coordination necessary with staff. There's no monetary.
All right, so then my suggestion is to reduce the $4,000 request, subtract 1,200 from that, make it clear that that 1,200 is to come out of the reforestation. That brings a total allocation request to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board of 2,800.
Rebecca? In '24, you had the fishing prizes listed separately from the $1,000 for the fishing tournament. And I don't see that in '25. Do you need?
We were anticipating sponsors in, in, in 2023, '24, whenever we first brought that in. We were unable to secure sponsors and that's why the prizes had to be brought in to that.
But you have less money for the fishing tournament this year.
We do.
Do you need to add back that prize money?
It would, if we, in order for us to secure prizes for the fishing tournament, yes. I will say that the fishing tournament, this was much of a discussion amongst the board, did not bring in the amount of people we would have liked to have seen. And so if we can get the people to the tournament, definitely, we would want them to, to have the prizes available to that.
Add back like $300?
So $3100 would be the new request.
I, I also want to make sure that, I, I don't think it's right that people are bringing candy, you know, are, are, is that adequate for your trunk or treat or Christmas parade? If, I, I just feel like it, it isn't, it should not be a financial burden on any board member to bring, you know, 30 or 40 or 50 dollars worth of candy to an event. I think that that is incumbent on us to fund that. So let's just make sure that that is covered.
Yeah, the trunk or treat, we got overwhelmed. There was a lot of people there. I don't know if any of you attended that.
Every year, we get more and more candy and then, and then it's every year we get, it gets bigger and bigger. And then it just, it's like a revolver, it just, like, last year, I think we only had candy for what, an hour? Or less, and everybody ran out?
You have to go get candy?
Yeah.
We had candy the whole time, but we had to share with the youth advisory council because they ran out. And other, other booths had to fold up because they ran out too. So by the time the last group was coming through, there was like 10 people giving out candy.
Right.
Yeah, so I would, I would, I would ask that we increase that so that that doesn't happen and all, everyone gets to enjoy the booths that people spent their time and effort to create.
Yeah, a couple of comments. One, I do agree, I was going to, going to say the same thing, both, and probably for the Christmas parade. You're talking about cutting that 1,200 or the, the $1,200. I don't know that I would cut the whole thing. I think maybe some of this needs to be allocated. Again, maybe it's another 200 to trunk or treat, 200 to Christmas parade. The question I've got for you, and, and this is more of the Parks Board discussion. So our fishing tournament. So it's not, we've, we've not had great participation. I think that the original plan was that it was going to be more of a family-friendly city kind of event. It's really morphing into a fishing tournament with guys that fish tournaments. I'm not saying that's wrong, but I, I don't know that, as the one who came up with the idea, in full disclosure, I'm not sure that.
Are you suggesting that we just cut that?
Yeah, I'm not sure it's got the legs to continue forward. So if anybody's worried about hurting my feelings, don't.
I appreciate that because, you know, we try new things and we realize that they don't work out. And so then we just, we, we adjust and, and move forward. So if, if you, if you're recognizing that maybe this isn't worth the, the funding and staff time associated with it and are suggesting to either reallocate or cut the fishing tournament out, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Again, it's somewhat for the Parks Board on what they feel about it. But I guess I am certainly okay with doing it. I think fiscally, it makes sense. I think it's resources and time. You could maybe come up with a new event.
Yeah, we'd like to, if, if the fishing tournament is not there, we'd like to put our focus into the Arbor Day because the commute, it's a broader community. It's helping to reforest our, our community, beautify it, and helping everyone enroll it. They all have a chance.
How quickly did those trees go last year? I feel like they went really fast.
They went really fast.
So maybe, maybe, okay, so then let's, let's just say that the, the new budget request is $3,500. And then, you know, y'all can put some more money into the Arbor Day event. I'm sorry, let me be clear. I'm sorry, let me be clear. Sorry, no, we're going to use the reforestation fund. Sorry, get out of my head.
Right, but you can put some more into the trunk or treat.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, could, could I say that we just, we allocate the $3,500 and the Parks Board can adjust the categories as they see fit? Isn't that what we said to the earlier fund?
Yeah.
So, that we don't have to, they can do that.
Okay.
So, I feel like that might be a lot because if you X the fishing tournament and you take away the Arbor Day allocation, you're at 2,200.
Correct.
Which is way below 35. So, maybe 3,000?
I would go with 3,000.
Yeah, no, I was adjusting based on new numbers being thrown out.
Yeah.
And 3,000, I think is a, is a fair number.
And Becky, I would also, for next year, I would ask for you to look at, are there training and learning opportunities for the board so that you become a better board and understand Parks and Rec even better?
Thank you for that. I think that's a great addition. We'll take that under advisement and we'll see what we can research and find out.
Awesome.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thanks for all of you.
All right. Goodness gracious. All right.
Animal shelter?
Uh, that's not the animal shelter, that's Frogs. Yep, come on.
Morning, Mayor, Council, Staff. Today, I'm speaking to you on behalf of the community organizations active in disaster, otherwise known as the COAD. Want to talk a little bit about their 2024 request and their expenditures to date and then we'll get into their 2025 request. So, in 2024, the COAD requested 5,000 in budgetary support. To date, they have spent $12,743 on the Public Safety and Preparedness Expo. 5,933 of that was a direct expenditure of the COAD. The remaining 6,810 was through sponsorships. They have spent $450 through the Emergency Assistance Grant, which is for hotel stays and other support for people in need. And then $200 in direct shelter operations and support. And then, of course, $832 for yearly website maintenance. For fiscal year 2025, they're again requesting $5,000. Their estimated expenses, first starting with the Public Safety and Preparedness Expo in November, they're estimating that to be between 2,500 and 5,000. Obviously, those expenditures will be based on available funds or additional funds that are available to them. For the Emergency Assistance Grant, they're anticipating $1,000 in costs for that. And again, that's to house people in hotels and provide other support for their needs. And then shelter operations again is estimated at 700 for the year. And then yearly maintenance for the website, again, at $832. For fiscal year 2025, they do plan on conducting some shelter volunteer and disaster recovery training, but they aren't anticipating any, incurring any costs associated with that training. So, again, their request for fiscal year 2025 is $5,000. So, if there's anything I can answer for you, I'd be happy.
I don't think that's enough. That doesn't cover the estimated costs. So, I don't understand how, how that $5,000 was.
So, there, there is a, another fund associated with the COAD and I'm having, struggling at the top of my head, it's what that number is. It felt like it was like around COVID that we allocated a chunk of money to COAD. I cannot remember how much. Do y'all know? Let me make a phone call real quick. Y'all can talk. Somebody's going to know, I mean, somebody's going to have an answer for me.
Yeah, I mean, given last year's expenditures and given the estimates for this year, I just don't see how 5,000 is enough.
$30,000 from the disaster fund, that's why.
So, is that still in?
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed. Appreciate it. Bye.
That's the balance now?
Yes, there's 30,000 associated, I forget the title of the fund, but it's.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but it was my understanding that 30,000 was provided as seed money for the organization and to get some things going. And I do understand that there's roughly 29 to 30,000 still left in that.
So, that's, that's why the, it's not seeming to align. They're just, but I, I will, I do want to brag on COAD for a minute. They've done a great job with getting sponsorships for that event. I mean, you can see the total cost of the event was 12,700 and over half of that was from sponsorships. I mean, that's how we should be doing our business, you know, with everything that we can. And so, appreciate them for that. The Emergency Assistant Grant, we've seen increased usage of that fund over the year. There's just an increase in calls and, you know, relating from fires, power outages, other, other events that happen along the way. And, and as we grow, that's just, we'll continue to get, the demand will continue to grow. So, let's see.
It's been about 7,500 this past year.
Yeah.
So.
On the emergency grant?
No, on total expenses, so.
And there's been some close calls where Red Cross was probably not going to be able to come and support Rallett where we would have had to have used a whole lot of the funding out of the Emergency Assistant Grant and probably over budget. There, there were a couple of close calls where that could have happened. So, this, this provides a, the $1,000 provides a good enough buffer if any, anything really bad does happen.
Well, and I, I'm, I would also like to look at the shelter operations and support. Is $700 enough? Because I, I'm very concerned about our grid and heat events. So, I do want to make sure that we have funding available.
So, I do know that they can use that additional funding for those purposes. That's just their estimated cost based on what they've experienced. And that's not only supporting our shelter operations, but when the partners get together and create a shelter in the community at one of the churches, that also can go to that, so.
And, and I don't want to conflate either that this is to support COAD's part in a shelter operation. In most cases, this city will be probably hosting that shelter operation and running it, managing it through Office of Emergency Management and if not, through Red Cross. So, the COAD isn't going to bear the entire burden of a shelter operation.
Absolutely, but, but my understanding was that they do.
Assist from time to time, yeah.
Yeah.
Counsel, are we good?
I'd say 7,500.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Okay. I'm good with that. All right.
You guys argue with us, too?
I'm not going to argue with you guys.
All right, very good. Let's, let's keep going.
Thank you.
All right, 7,500, COAD. Let's, who's next on The Price is Right?
Senior Advisory Board.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Kenneth Williams of the Senior Advisory Board.
Sure you go.
I'm going to. No, no, press it ahead, I do, but did that one right there? Okay. Okay. Now, I'm a little visually challenged, so I'm going to be looking at my notes here. But, okay, so, our mission is to represent the senior citizens of Rallett and we co-sponsor and recommend appropriate forums, programs and services for Rallett senior citizens. We do this through educational programs, we monitor senior friendly services and communications, we share information on senior programs and programs and services and make efforts to reach seniors in our community. So, what we're asking for, and I believe this will be our first ask, if we've had any money in the past, nobody told me about it, I've never seen any money. So, the, we do yearly seminars and we want to continue doing them, but we'd like to have some money to provide some refreshments for folks. We have had people come out in the past, but we haven't had any refreshments. That would be a big improvement. We support an annual resource fair and we've brought in quite a few vendors. We had, I think, about 30, 37 or 38 at the last one that we did. We, and so, we're asking for a total of 1,200 for that particular function to support our educational efforts. In addition, for communication and visibility, we like to recognize individual volunteers who do things that have an impact for seniors in Rallett. We also like to recognize senior friendly businesses. And, and we, and we'd like to have a little funding so that we can help with, in those areas. We're also going to present at city events at the Rallett Community Center and also visit senior living communities. We've, we've done some things in the past with that and we'd like to do some additional in the future. We want to get a table cover, some table flyer holders. We've been, we've decorated, we've had our folks come out and decorate Christmas trees during that part of the year. We'd like some support for that. And then in addition, about 100 bucks so we can get some name, name tags so folks can look at us and they don't have to say, hey, you. They can specify exactly who the people are who are in the Senior Advisory Board. So, total summary is approximately 2,300 bucks and we only request that support from the City Council. Any questions?
And I fully support it. Again, this is the first time they've ever asked for any money.
The other boards have, in addition to name tags, have shirts. I was wondering, are you guys interested in that?
You know, I saw that nice shirt that the lady had there and I said, wow, that looks pretty good. And so, maybe we could have a shirt. I don't know, maybe for the senior theme, we'd have like gray shirts or something. I'm just thinking off the top of my head, you know, something like that. But that, that would be nice as well, yeah.
That would be about, the others had about 300 allocated, I think, from name tags and shirts.
I don't.
It was about $45 a person, so you guys would need about 450 to do a shirt and a name tag for everybody.
Okay.
If you did that.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a good addition if we can do that.
Yeah, let's do that.
So, 2,650?
Yes. Yes, that'd be good.
All right. I'm sure you're going to work with, with Shelley on this, but when you start to do these signage banners, whatever, tabletop, as much as you can do that is reusable, recyclable. So, don't put any dates on it, nothing like that, you know? Make it so there's just senior advisory board, maybe here's a link to our city page or our Facebook page or whatever, but, you know, keep it generic. That way, you can reuse them over and over and over.
Okay, thank you.
And don't let them blow away in the wind like the Parks Board did.
Okay, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
That's a good point.
All right, who's next? Youth Advisory Council, Youth Advisory Council. Who will be taking this one?
Hello.
Hello, again.
Hello, it's me again.
It's you.
Good morning, Brittany Farr, Director of Economic and Community Engagement. First of all, I apologize that we don't have Representative of the Youth Advisory Council here today. There's a little bit of miscommunication between the transition from staff liaison as we work through the assumption of the Parks and Recreation Department, but I'm well versed in what's going to happen and I'm sure if I miss anything, the Deputy Mayor Pro Tem will help me out. So, the mission and goals of the Youth Advisory Council is to serve as messengers to this, for the city of Rallett and assist the City Council in outreach to the youth in Rallett. They assist the city by volunteering at local city events. They educate the youth participants in the local political process. They encourage Rallett youth to be more active in the outdoor environment. And then they make recommendations regarding the needs and wants of Rallett's youth. So, last year, the Youth Advisory Council had a requested budget of 7,500. As you see, we undersold that quite a bit. The majority of savings came from what we spent in the youth summit for this year. We only had four participants this year, but part of what drove that cost down is it was held locally. That's a program that's put on by TML. And this year, it was hosted in the city of Lewisville, so we had no travel requirements. We just had to pay for the registration of the four youth members that wanted to attend. The Youth Advisory Summit is coming up. It's slated for February of 2025, but the location has not been given yet. So, you will see on the next slide that we are going, we're, we're cutting budget out, but we are holding a little bit more budget in that line item for next year until we know where that location is going to be and hopefully can get more participants from our Youth Advisory Council. Similar to some of the other budget presentations, you've heard there have been some expenditures for candy at the trunk or treat event. There's also the first meeting of each Youth Advisory Council. They typically take the month of July off and then start in August to coincide with the school year. And that first meeting is always an orientation boot camp. And so, we do provide some funding for the orientation boot camp as well as new member shirts. And then we'll have a little bit more of the money from the orientation boot camp that bleeds into the '25 year, but that's just because of that August timeline. It straddles two fiscal years. So, for FY '25, we're requesting $6,000, which is a $1,500 reduction in what was requested last year. As I mentioned, we are holding that $4,000 for the Youth Advisory Summit for transportation, registration, lodging, meals and little youth advisory pens, just until we know where that location is going to be and hopefully can get more participants this year. The Youth Advisory Council has indicated a desire to do more programming, so special events like life skills. They've already started partnering with some of the other boards and commissions on Get Out the Vote effort as well as swag, so little bags, things they can hand out at the table events. They are also asking for an event table cover, not dissimilar to what some of the other boards and commissions have required with their branding, as well as $400 for the trunk or treat event this year. Expenditure of $300 for the '25, '26 orientation boot camp and then $250 for new member shirts for our Youth Advisory Council. I'd be remiss, I know the totals don't add, I'm missing a line item for $175, which is our miscellaneous, just to cover any additional cost if we have more folks turn over and we need more shirts this year or we have more participation in the Youth Advisory Summit, hopefully. So, a total of $6,000 for the Youth Advisory Council this year. Any questions?
Wow, okay.
Thank you.
Just to Elisa's, just to Elisa's earlier, sorry, to Elisa's earlier point with the, with the trunk or treat, 400, right? I mean, we're kind of in the same boat as we just were with Parks, so.
Well, um, yeah. I don't know, do you, do you expect that we'd use all of that? You said we're holding some funding.
I have 175, yeah, for miscellaneous. Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Flexibility.
Yes, sir. I always build in a contingency.
And actually, I would, I would be fine to bump it to 6,000. And if you don't spend all of it, it just rolls over next year. And so, I would be fine, fine with that.
Yeah.
Because I really do not want people having to take money out of their own pockets to serve in our community.
It is 6,000?
It is.
Oh, okay.
She had a line, I wasn't up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next.
Animal shelter?
Don't understand what to do with it all.
So, we don't have anybody here from the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, though I've been talking with Sue from the Chair of the Board over, even over the weekend. They had, I believe, $2,000 allocated in the current fiscal year, though the only purchase that they've made so far was for a tablecloth to do tabling at events and support the shelter at those things.
There's a thing there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to, sorry.
You're good.
Okay, sorry. So, that's only expense that they have incurred in the current year. This request shows $2,000. Actually, just yesterday, Sue asked that we reduce it to $1,000 because they've identified some areas where they would like to spend funding, but they think it might be a struggle to spend the full 2,000 without doing a little bit more planning and coming up with things in future years. And so, I guess her feedback was that since they didn't spend the funding that was allocated this year, it would be hard to ask for that same amount of money in a future year. And so, they would like to ask, ask for less, so they would like some sort of allocation. Her feedback for what they would like to do, and they have already discussed as a board, was development of some sort of a. Um, her, uh, feedback for what they would like to do, and they have already discussed as a board, was development of some sort of a brochure, a handout for different events that they would like to attend, including the emergency preparedness event this year, and they would also like to take on, um, the task of doing some volunteer and staff appreciation for the shelter, uh, volunteers and staff. And that is the extent of their request.
Okay, so a thousand dollars is the new request.
So, um, I know Sue has had a problem trying to figure out what to do with this money. I don't know, I was the Animal Shelter Board liaison, but I'm not now, so I don't know whether they did this, but did they spend any money for shirts and name tags? Because that was something that, you know, all the other boards do, and it was one of the reasons we allocated this, but I'm not sure they did.
They did actually spend money and all got name tags, and then, of course, ordered the tablecloth they used at the Adopt-a-thon on June first. As far as shirts, I'm not aware that they purchased shirts.
No.
Um.
The city paid for the badges was another fund.
Oh, it was, yeah. That's interesting.
Okay.
We do have one additional meeting this year, so they could discuss if they wanted to do shirts out of what's currently budgeted for this year, and it wouldn't need to be necessarily a budget request for the next year.
For as, for as little as they meet, and I, I think a thousand dollars is, especially if the Chair says a thousand dollars, so. I'm, I'm good with a thousand. Are y'all, everything good? Okay, thank you.
Board of Adjustment.
There's no budget requests, so.
Right.
Oh, there's no budget requests? Okay.
There.
Thank you.
There's a middle, sorry. The budget request for Board of Adjustment is very minimal. Um, this is all things that I think were really kind of included in the staff budget previously. Um, we met with them last week and talked about different training opportunities and other things that they might want to include in a budget request, and they asked for just minimal, um, budget for name tags and some sort of a binder to keep all of their materials in.
It's just too much. I can't support it. I can't support it. It's too far. Goes too far.
Love this board.
No, three hundred and sixty. Any opposition to that?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, significantly different from Board of Adjustment requests. The Planning and Zoning Commission has a, I think, much larger request than what they've previously been allocated. Um, although I look back at several years, it looks like they were receiving fifteen hundred in that allocation and hadn't expended any of the funding, at least for the last few years.
Say that again, rewind.
They, they were receiving fifteen hundred dollars per year, and were not spending this ones, at least for the last few years.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure how far back that goes, at least the last few years, so. Um, so this request is a little bit different this year. I think just like Brittany mentioned about travel, you know, these conferences move from place to place. Uh, this year, the Texas chapter of the A P A, the American Planning Association Conference, is actually slated to be in Allen. And so we discussed with, um, the Chair and Vice Chair of P N Z whether they would like to attend or maybe plan for the board members to attend that. There's a special hundred and seventy-five-dollar rate for, um, appointed and elected officials to attend that conference. We have plugged in twelve hundred twenty-five dollars, which is for seven. Uh, that would just be assuming that not all members are going to be able to take off of work and attend, uh, these conferences. Um, so that would be specifically for them to attend the A P A conference. The additional funding there, which is the, the biggest piece of the budget of the eighteen hundred dollars, uh, is for, um, some sort of professional, whether that be, uh, our city attorney, some other professional in planning to come in and give some kind of planning and legal training specific to the board. Um, this would be training that could be open as well to the City Council, whether that's a notice of quorum or a joint meeting or however you might want to do it if you want to participate, but, um, we feel there's some areas in, uh, plating, zoning, really all the responsibilities that they are given that, um, they haven't been receiving regular training recently on. So we would like to increase the level of training for them so that they're well-versed when these topics arise.
So, question on that. So, you know, I understand that that, that was a consideration previously under previous city leadership, and circumstances were different. Is this not something in terms of the training for understanding or planning, zoning, S U Ps, Ps, et cetera? Is this not something that you can do? I mean, do we need a, do we need a city attorney and pay them hourly to do this?
I mean, I, you, you know, it's common to use a city attorney in conjunction with X.
Okay.
Uh, but I don't know why it's coming out of there. It's normally, I think this is going to be for others that may come and speak to this board.
Which I don't, that's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, again.
Why?
This is for you to decide.
Yeah, understood. I just, I, I.
Can we, can we, can we give them training? Sure. Uh, the city attorney's billed on a separate line item that would not, we wouldn't hit this line item.
Right.
Even if she were to come or send some other person to come and train on this board, it wouldn't hit this, right? Any differently than we would any other issue, so.
So then I go back to, you know, why are we bringing in outside planning consultants?
I don't know.
And we shouldn't. I mean, we have our own planning expert here.
There, there may be some, there may be some C and U stuff they're interested in. I could think of why you would. There may be a, a, a person who's just particularly, particularly expert in some area, right, that we are not. But that, this, again, this is up to you. If you, if you don't want to allocate the money, don't. I'm not going to advocate for this money one way or the other. We're here just, and that was the point. We're here just to kind of tell you the request.
Yep.
Well, I can tell you that in the past, when I was on P N C, we did not get very good training. Um, now that may change with current staff, but I understand why they're asking for it because we had people on there who really did not understand the basics about, you know.
Totally get that, for sure. And that is where I go back to, you know, circumstances were different, different city, city leadership. We have some competency in the department now, um, where that shouldn't be an issue going forward. And so I don't want to hire a consultant, I don't, when we have our own planning expert in-house, I don't want to hire a planning expert from a company to tell us how to do plating, zoning, and all that when we should and do have someone now in our city who can do that for us, you know what I'm saying?
Uh, yeah, I understand. I'm just saying that's why they're asking. I know where that's coming from.
Yeah.
Let, let me help if I could. I mean, within the planning discipline, there are a myriad of things. Again, I mentioned C and, C and U's, people who are just expert in certain areas. That we, we can't be expert in all things, no, no different than any lawyer can be an expert in all topics, and that's why you commonly will have to go out and get outside counsel, uh, notwithstanding the expertise of, you know, your in-house counsel. That could be the same premise here. Uh, I don't know what they want training in, so I can't speak in any specificity, but I could understand why they would want to have some money set aside in the event there is a topic that they're interested in, and it is outside of our expertise, so.
And like I, I also feel like we have, we have new staff that are, uh, getting their feet wet. They are learning, they're, they are, um, I, I'm confident and delighted in their experience, but I feel like eighteen hundred dollars is very reasonable for, um, somebody who doesn't have the workload and the learning curve that they have right now. I think that that is totally reasonable. I would, I, I would be the first one to sign up for this training because there are things about the planning process I, I have to scratch my head and say, "Okay, go Goog, Google this." And so I would really enjoy and I would really benefit personally from having that, and I can only assume that, uh, all of the planning and zoning probably would appreciate that training as well.
You have to consider staff time, too.
Yeah, I, I do think that that.
They do have a lot to do.
I, I agree with Councilmember Bowers. I think it's also good to have experts outside opinion sometimes to just give a different perspective. And someone may be an expert practitioner, but not a great trainer. Sometimes if you bring in someone that's a really good trainer, they can, they're, they're already have presentations set up for specific topics. I think eighteen hundred dollars.
And, and that was a big part of the problem that I was talking about when I was, it wasn't that the staff didn't know.
Right.
It was that they weren't teachers.
Right.
Basically.
And for something that has regulatory, you know.
P N C is absolutely.
Authority, I think it's important to have experts that trade on that, and I think that to Councilmember Bowers, it's a, it's a low cost for, for that.
Any opposition?
No opposition. I was, I was sitting here thinking, while we were having that conversation, that an alternative, and it seems like that's where we're going to go now, but an alternative might be providing an allocation for each commissioner to seek kind of their outside learning through T M L or different avenues. You know, if they had a small budget, right, a small educational budget where they could attend T M L webinars or things like that and kind of learn on their own. But I don't have any disagreement with allocating that funding for, to have someone.
It's eighteen hundred. I'm not digging my foot in anything, so.
And we certainly can use this money for that same purpose you stated, T M L conferences or otherwise, the awful lot of webinars.
Okay.
So that's the amount requested?
Yep.
Thirty-six twenty-five?
Uh huh.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
We already did that one.
I believe that's it?
Yep.
We run out of schedule.
Are we, and do we have a break scheduled between?
After the nonprofit grants, but the nonprofit grants are only fifteen minutes.
Yeah, that ain't gonna be fifteen minutes.
Can we take a five-minute break?
That ain't gonna be fifteen minutes. Yeah. Yeah, nonprofit grants ain't gonna be fifteen. We'll, that, no. So, let's go ahead and take a ten-minute break. It's nine fifty-six, ten minutes, we'll reconvene here. All right, it is twelve o'clock, and we are back from our lunch break. We're going to go into the police compensation proposal, and I think presenting that is Assistant Chief Hutchins.
It's both.
And both, and Chief.
This is the double sale, right? That's right, that's right. So, good afternoon, Mayor Council. So I'm just going to introduce this. Uh, I'm really gonna, this is, uh, just Assistant Chief Hutchins, uh, is going to give the, the presentation to you all on our PD compensation plan, but I want to give just a little bit of a, I guess, a little bit of a background of how we got here. What, what really drove this was doing our strategic plan and getting feedback from our employees about strengths and weaknesses and the SWOT analysis that we did, and of course, police compensation is always going to come up in those, no matter where you are. But with the employees that have worked here for many, many years educating their new chief, they're very aware of the operational impacts of having constant attrition and turnover. And so what's really driving this is two things. It's, one, it's, it's our market, as the City Manager alluded to in the, in the opening and introduction. It's a very, very competitive market in public safety, and with twenty-nine hundred police agencies in Texas, and particularly, uh, North Texas being extremely competitive, the, um, the climate in law enforcement is more difficult to recruit officers. There's large numbers of vacancies in many agencies, so we're all competing against one another. And we're all, in some cases, stealing officers, if you will, from each, each other, from different agencies, just to fill our own spots. So it's really, it's really become kind of a kitchen soup of whoever has the best package kind of wins, in a way. And so we have felt the operational impacts of this, and Chief Hutchins is going to go into that a little bit. But aside from the climate, well, part of the, uh, part of the, um, not the climate, but the, uh, uh, industry that we're in with this competitiveness also is many agencies, our competition, what we consider our competition agencies, our bordering agencies, our Rockwall, our Wiley, um, Mesquite, that we are more, we considered our competition agencies. We're not talking about Plano, Garland, we're not talking about the Friscos, right? We're talking about similar-sized agencies, similar-budgeted agencies, similar type of crime in, in communities. They're updating their pay plans, and so you'll see some, part of Assistant Chief Hutchins' presentation is going to show you within the last couple of really weeks and even months or even weeks, several of our competition agencies that have recently updated their pay plans in a big way that has sort of made waves across North Texas. And so it's that, but it, but it's also our attrition rate as a result of that. And you all have asked me, um, you know, when, when are we going to be able to add officers to the streets? Uh, we know it takes six months to go to the academy and another nine months for training. Since I've been here, coming up on close to two years, we've had it between nineteen and twenty-five officers perpetually in training. And Assistant Chief Hutchins is going to show some data about why that's the case and how it's a factor, it's not a B factor, but pay compensation, our pay structure, our plan, if you will, our steps, is a factor in that. So Assistant Chief Hutchins has done amazing job on this. He really did his own research project. He came to me and he said, "Chief, I want to tackle this," shortly after I promoted him. And we met with our P O A and other representatives, and special shout-out and thank you to finance because we've been brutal on them. Every time we change an option, or it, it requires a whole new analysis with the impacts of that. And so we have all that for you today, and I will turn this over to Assistant Chief Hutchins to present.
Mayor Council? So, in my role, I'm over the Support Services Division. Um, one of the areas it encompasses is hiring and recruiting. Um, so that team obviously is responsible for filling the vacancies within our police department. Uh, when they go out to recruit, uh, they have a very difficult time, uh, you know, comparing with the other agencies we're competing with. Uh, some of the feedback they've gotten is, "Hey, well, your compensation package just doesn't compare to Agency X." So what does that look like? So currently, we have a nine-step plan. Officers start at step one, obviously, and they top out at step nine. Most agencies in our area are anywhere between five and eight steps. And the ones that are surpassed that, usually the officers are compensated, uh, for the most part within the first five years, and they get incremental steps after that. So what we've had to do to make sure we're filling our vacancies within our ranks is to expand our recruiting area. So we're recruiting at this time upwards of an hour and a half to two hours away from the Rowlett, from the city of Rowlett. So we've been fairly successful with that, but also comes some challenges with that as well. Uh, so imagine you're driving two hours of work, so two hours in, you're working a twelve-hour shift, two hours back. So your workday is really sixteen hours. Uh, that doesn't account for if you get a late call, and now you have an arrest. So you're staying till, let's say, nine o'clock, nine o'clock at night if you're working day shift. Well, that's two hours back home, but you're not getting home till around eleven o'clock, eleven fifteen, takes a while to wind down, eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock before you wind down, then you're back up at three o'clock in the morning to come to work again at six, at six A M. So there's some challenges associated with that. So, um, our recruiting team, they've done a great job filling our vacancies, but we still have to figure out how we can be competitive in this area. So that's why we came up with this compensation plan. So as we started, we wanted to make sure, hey, do we really have a retention issue? Is this something, you know, we're thinking we really have and we don't? So we reviewed data from twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-three, and we were pretty shocked that the number of officers we had leave the agency. So over that three-year span, we had forty-four officers leave the agency. Thirty-one of those officers left between step one and step five. Uh, thirteen of those officers were sent to the academy, so we invested money in their salary benefits. We paid for their academy, uh, and then they left. Uh, on average, it costs about a hundred thousand dollars per officer, so you're looking at forty-four officers trying to, trying to replace. You can do the math, that's around four million or so dollars. So, again, uh, most of those officers left between step one and five, so one, two, three years, we got them trained up. They're contributing to the agency, they're contributing to the city, and then they're gone. Of those forty-four officers, thirty-four left for the agencies or did not make it through training, five retired, five were terminated. Uh, currently, we're authorized a hundred and eight officers. On average, over that three-year span, we were losing about fifteen percent of our officers per, uh, per year. So it's hard for any agency to put out quality work when you're losing fifteen percent of your workforce every year.
So for the thirty-four that left, do we do exit interviews to determine kind of what happened?
At that time, we were not doing exit interviews.
Okay.
Um, that's something currently we're going to be implementing so we can make sure we're getting good information back from the people that are leaving us to see why they're leaving.
Fifty percent attrition, what's the industry average, do you know?
Uh, that's, that's on the high end.
Okay.
Um, that's a very high end for a industry. So we started looking at our strategic compensation. How can we compensate our officer appropriately? So again, this is our current step plan. Officers start out at sixty-nine thousand dollars, and after, uh, once they reach step nine, they're at ninety-six thousand dollars. A five-year comparison, this, this is one of the most important slides you'll see today. So, uh, at five years, officers, the, the five-year officer is going to be, uh, very experienced. They're going to start working on their own, uh, they're not asking as many questions. They are starting to, uh, help train some of the younger officers. Maybe they're becoming F T Os, maybe they're becoming crime scene officers. Maybe they're becoming, uh, accident investigators. And so cities really compensate these officers appropriately before, because of their knowledge. So the average is ninety-two thousand dollars for our eighteen comparative cities, and our other police officers making right around eighty-three thousand dollars. And you can see where that falls in the chart. So like Chief said, we started to look at other agencies that were comparable to us. One of the agencies that just updated their pay scale was the Wiley Police Department. Uh, they implemented a seven-year step plan, a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars, and this is how it compares to our, our current step plan. It's worth noting, we did some research on Wiley, um, and their productivity. Our officers, uh, compared to their, to their officers, in just about every category, uh, we were outworking them thirty to forty. them thirty to forty percent. So, we're taking about two years longer to get the top out, but we're outworking officers at Wiley a pretty significant amount.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question real quick? So, a step is equal to a year?
Yes.
Okay.
One step per year. So, on your anniversary date, you move to the next step. So, we begin to develop different plans, a myriad of options. Chief said earlier, finance was very instrumental in helping us out with that. This is kind of where we landed. It's a six-year step plan, where officers start at seventy-seven thousand dollars, and after six years, they top out just over a hundred thousand. We also had to adjust our sergeants and our lieutenants to, you know, make sure they're comparable to the area as well. So, we gave them adjustments as well. Sergeants, like you see, start from one oh five, top out at one eighteen, and so on for the lieutenants. So, we went back and compared the salaries to Wiley at this time. So, now, our officers top out one year earlier than Wiley, and about eleven or twelve hundred dollars more, a little bit more than that. They also, their starting pay is a little bit higher, and they receive more compensation throughout the plan than the Wiley officers do.
And when, when did Wiley make that update?
This happened maybe two months ago.
They did a major update, it was probably about two months ago now.
Yeah. So, that was, it's very recent.
Do you have any idea how many officers we have in each of the steps right now?
I couldn't tell you exactly. Finance has all that information because they did all the projections for it, so we can get that for you.
Okay.
We'll say one thing is, in the previous slide, Assistant Chief Hutchins showed how many officers left at various stages, and what we found is really our problem window, you can't fix everything, but our problem window is that, I think it was three to, step three to five, in our nine, in our previous nine-step, our current nine-step plan. That's where we've lost the bulk, so that's right when they finish field training, get out on their own, they now have, you know, we basically trained them, we've invested in them, and then they're leaving for other agencies. So, then we start the cycle back over again. So, that's kind of where the focus has been, is that three-to-five-year window, but definitely in, for the recruitment, in the entry, and as well as in the top out is gonna be an important part of it, to be competitive.
Like we said, out of the forty-four officers, thirty-one left between step one and step five, so.
Chief, and this is kind of an ambiguous question, so I apologize. But, so I see we're going to a six-step from a nine-step, that if I'm, if I'm a recruit, that sounded like really good to me to, you know, compress that time. When you're talking to candidates, obviously, just the hard dollars are a big factor. How much of a factor to the candidates is shortening that, that step window from nine years to six years? Is that a significant, it seems like it would be, but I'm just asking here.
Yeah, for sure, I think that's a very, it's a, it's a very, very big factor. Like I said earlier, you know, a lot of the agencies we're competing with are anywhere between five and eight steps. So, when we come in at nine, and then our top out is not as, not as high, it kind of sets us back. So, now we're playing catch-up.
One of the things that we're, we're seeking to do here, too, is give us somewhat of a competitive edge.
Yes.
And, and what Assistant Chief Hutchins is gonna show you here in a few more slides, I don't wanna get ahead of them, is, you know, we, we have been able to recruit successfully from Dallas College, from the non-affiliates that are paying for themselves to go through the academy, but what we aren't recruiting with our laterals, our certified officers, is officers from our competition agencies. Almost zero. And so, we're able to pick up, and we've been successful with non-affiliates that have paid to go through the academy where they haven't already been picked up by another agency, but that's our primary area where we're, where we're recruiting. So, I think that's an important part of, we're, we're also recruiting Generation Z, right? So, they're, part of what we need to present in our recruitment plans is that this is an important factor. They're not necessarily always going to be looking at, at the, the step plan is condensed, so this is a better agency, maybe if they're a little bit older, but the twenty-one, twenty-two year olds that we're recruiting, that isn't their primary driver, we know that from the differences in the generations. But that is something that we're going to start talking about, about why that's important, that should be an important factor for them.
One other question, so, after step six, so after you've been with the city for six years, do we have police officers that just, they just stay, and then they get, do you get cost of living, or you're always at a hundred and two thousand dollars?
No.
I don't, I don't understand how that works.
The city usually provides some cost of living increase, it's not guaranteed every year, it just depends on what the year looks like financially. Again, that was our comparison to Wiley. This is what our sergeants look like compared to Wiley. Again, our officers are doing thirty, forty percent more work, so that work has fallen on the sergeants to supervise, so we thought it was important to make sure they're above Wiley as well. Same for the lieutenants.
What is, just curiosity, what is Garland's starting salary?
They are among the highest in all of, in all of DFW.
Okay.
They might in fact be the highest, maybe that needs to be Plano, Garland, we have that coming up here.
Garland's not in here, but what I, what I would say is, our pay scale is actually very comparable to Garland's at this point.
Sale itself.
If implemented.
Yeah.
Now, Garland does have additional steps, but those first five, six years are very comparable to Garland.
Good.
I think they have additional two steps where their officers top out at around a hundred and eight thousand.
Okay.
But, we're still comparable.
Thank you.
Here we have Waukesha Hachey, very similar-sized agency as well. They have a six-year plan, just like we do, but our officers top out, they start higher and they top out with more as well. Flower Mount just updated their pay as well, they went to an eight-year plan with the three percent lump sum after eight years. So, if you look at the six-year mark, our officers are making right around nine thousand, eight thousand dollars more than Flower Mount, it takes Flower Mount additional three years, basically, to get to that one oh two. So, this plan would be very much a better plan than what Flower Mount is offering. And then DFW Airport, pretty big agency as well, they just updated their, their pay. We start off higher and we top out higher. This one was interesting to me, Louisville is a pretty big police department, they have a five-year step plan, but even at five years, our officers are making more with this new step plan, and we have one additional step that allows a little bit extra money for them, which would top them out around four or five thousand dollars, four, four or five thousand dollars more. And then we go back to the five-year comparison, you see with the new pay plan where that would put us at a five-year mark, our officers. So, we went from eighty-two all the way up to ninety-eight, so we're about fifty-five hundred bucks, fifty-four hundred dollars, I'm sorry, above the average at this point.
Quick question. I'm sorry, fifty-one. Particularly with exist, officers with other agencies, you know, experienced officers with other agencies, sergeants, lieutenants, the program, as you've put it up here, is that an attractive enough program to draw in those type? And Chief Danny made the point, we're not bringing people in from other agencies. Is that program that you're proposing, you feel like is attractive enough that now we can maybe bring in some of these more experienced officers and have the benefit of that?
So, we hope so. We currently have a lateral program, I think they can come in at step five, that's the highest they can come in at.
I was gonna wonder what that was, yeah.
So, we're hoping with this, we can get more experienced officers, maybe still some people from Richardson or from Plano, or whoever the case may be, because right now we're not doing that at all. Like Chief said, we're only getting candidates from like Dallas County College or from the hospital district, things of that sort, which, they've all been great employees.
Right.
But they don't have as much experience as the ones that are already working in the city are gonna bring to us.
Chief, pause here for a moment, and I don't really wanna say much, but let me say this, this is not a supplemental enhancement request for you, this is already integrated into the budget. So, you can take it out, which I don't know that you would, but we really wanted to make sure you understood what was happening with this and those dollars that were being spent. And I wanted the chief to pause here because I think this is a significant slide, this is one of the most important slides you'll see, because the questions that you all have asked is about how competitive we are. Well, I think that's gonna give you a great sense of how competitive we'll be with this. And as you heard the chief mention earlier, a lot of those agencies have just updated their pay. And so, we took that into account as we were developing this, and that's why they had to lean on finance so much, because there were multiple iterations of this plan that came back, looked at suggestions. But look at where we are above Farmers Branch and others, and look at who's above us, and look at the size of those cities, both in terms of population and financial wherewithal. They're in a completely different league, quite frankly, but yet you can see how close we are to them.
How much did, trying to find it, how much did, did this proposal cost when it was put into our budget?
That's a latter slide, you'll see it.
Gotcha, I'm just trying to get to it.
Sorry, it's at the end.
I'm scrolling.
It's the last slide of the presentation.
Is it Charles intent or your philosophy that you wanna stabilize your, your officer rank and then grow your sergeants and lieutenants up from that?
I think so. So, we're losing officers, we're not losing sergeants and lieutenants. I think it's important to provide them some additional compensation, but we wanna make sure we have in place the people that are on the road, and make sure they're not leaving at a, at a higher rate.
And what also, I think, is important, especially internally, is, we've, we've told our employees, as you know, with RB, RB twenty-eight, did, came up with the vision and the values and the goals, and the vision is to be a leading public safety agency in Texas. And so, in past modeling, what we've seen is really, what is the average spread out across the city, or perhaps public safety with base pay? And so, that doesn't take into consideration the condensed step plan, the additional incentives that are offered, the kitchen soup of whatever that, that agency can offer, as you saw in Louisville, when there was little checkboxes, it showed all the little things that they additionally offer, right? The previous modeling didn't take those into consideration as much. And so, I think when we talk about being a-leading, not the-leading, right, that wasn't, we wanted it to be realistic, our vision, but I think that slide, as the city manager said, is an important one, because that puts us right at the top to be a-leading agency when it comes to compensation.
So, we're going through this compensation plan, we also wanted to look at incentives. One of the incentives we looked at was shift differential. So, we looked at our eighteen-member cities, seven have shift differential, ten do not, one did not provide us information whether they did or didn't. So, forty-one percent of the agencies that we compare ourselves to have shift differential. So, we saw this as an opportunity for our agency to have something that many others don't offer. So, we looked at the pay for those agencies for shift differential, out of the seven, five, the average was one fifty. One agency provided a three to six percent salary adjustment for shift differential, one agency did not provide that information at all. So, we recommended a two hundred dollar shift differential for our night shift employees. While we looked at shift differential, we looked at a myriad of other incentives, but we decided, after speaking with the RPOA, which is the Rallett Police Officers Association, that we would stick with the shift differential. The reason why is because it's, it's impacts more of our police department, impacts the jailers, the dispatchers, and the police officers. We thought it was very important while we're doing this to also make sure we're taking care of our dispatchers and we're considering them in this implementation. So, this is their current plan. They have a five, they have a five-step plan, and then they go into the open range. This really causes a lot of confusion for the dispatchers when it comes to, hey, I've been here ten years, I'm not topped out, why am I not topped out? So, this hybrid plan, our goal was to get them over to public safety so they can have a true step plan like the police officers do.
Thank you, yes.
So, currently, a five-year dispatcher, again, these are the people we lean on, they have a lot of information, a lot of knowledge, and this is where they currently sit for a five-year dispatcher, the average is sixty-two thousand, and we're paying our officers, I'm sorry, dispatchers right around fifty-eight thousand. Again, the dispatchers, that's their pay scale before they move on the left over into the open range. Now, the dispatch supervisors, they don't have a pay scale at all, they're completely in an open range, so again, we wanted to move them to the public safety side and provide them a pay scale just like the officers as well. And also, that aligns with industry standards when it comes to dispatchers, having them in a pay scale rather than open range. So, this is what we came up with. Seven steps for the dispatchers, five for the supervisors. And again, we compared them to Wiley. Again, Wiley just updated their pay scale, so this was kind of a, a starting point for us. Wiley has two additional steps, because they have a zero and an eight, so they have two additional steps that we don't have. So, our officer, our dispatchers will top out around four thousand dollars more with two less steps. When you compare them, the dispatcher supervisors, again, we have five steps, they have, it looks like seven, and they top out at around six thousand dollars more than a Wiley dispatch supervisor.
So, you're adding steps to the dispatcher plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Currently, there's only five, you're adding two.
Yes.
Well, but be clear, I don't want that to be misleading, because after that, they go into the abyss of open range. So, it looks like we're adding steps, we're really actually just giving structure to something that right now is incredibly undefined and frustrating for them.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to clarify, because on the police side, we're talking about, we wanna condense, wanna make it easier to get to the top.
Yep, no, I understood, we're not making it worse for them, we're actually giving them structure and certainty, which is something that they lack, which is something that they said was very important to them.
Got it, thank you.
That's what the five-year mark looks now for the dispatchers.
Wow.
So, they're right up there with Plano, Richardson, Frisco, those agencies. So, this is gonna be big for our dispatchers. And Mayor, he was asking about the cost, this is what it looks like here.
Yeah.
So, in FY twenty-five, that's gonna be, compared to our current pay scale, be additional six hundred and three thousand, and projected all the way out to FY twenty-nine, it'll be additional eight hundred and eighty-three thousand. It's important to note, this, it counts for shift differential, the steps, but it does not account for any market adjustments we receive later on. Communication, ninety-nine thousand dollars the first year, out to twenty-nine is gonna be two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. The same applies here, does not account for any market adjustments, but it does account for shift differential and the steps.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Counsel, questions?
I, I guess, just so I'm clear, so, pretty much, this is all from, from staff's point of view, all these numbers are already cooked into the budget, right?
Uh, yes.
So, there's nothing, there's not really anything, this is more informational.
This is informational.
All on board.
Unless you said, "Take it out of the budget," I have included this.
No, 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 I just wanna make sure.
That's why, that's why I put it, part of one of the objectives was to get this done and integrated into the budget. This, this is part of when you see the, the little model I showed you, that number was already cooked into personnel costs and other expenses.
So, this is another area where I'd like us to run a model when we come back to counsel, I'd like to see what the cost would look like if we got the starting salary up a little closer to eighty. That's what Garland and Plano currently, that's their starting range, is just over eighty. As we saw, you know, Wiley today is paying roughly what we proposed to pay at the enactment of fiscal year twenty-five. I understand that, you know, there will always be a, kind of a give and take, one agency may be higher than us for the first six months, another, you know, and then we'll be behind them, or we'll be in front of them the other six months. I'd like to push this just a little more. At least I wanna see what that cost will look like and what the impact on our budget would be, to determine if it's a sound strategy or not. I just wanna, I wanna look at that number and think about it.
When are we meeting again? So, here, here's the complication with that, right? It's a little different than water modeling, we can adjust that very easily. We do this, there's a significant impact on the general fund, could be, I don't wanna say significant, there's an impact on what we present.
Can we run the numbers today?
I don't know. I was gonna say, I don't think that's realistic. No, I don't think that's realistic, this is a little different than water modeling. Happy to do it, so we'll have to schedule another meeting, and just so everyone here is aware of that, so.
Yeah.
Just so I can provide finance right numbers, are we just talking the starting and not the, not the top out, just the starting pay? Or we're talking about just?
I think you have to move them all.
You'd have to move them all.
You have to move them all.
Filks all down.
You'd have to move them all.
Oh, it will.
I mean, obviously, there's.
And remember, you'll have to move every single category.
There is plenty of time before we have to approve the next fiscal year budget, so we'll, we'll have a work session about it and.
It's up to the council.
Put a bow on it.
Oh, I agree with that. I absolutely am willing to go through another meeting for that.
What other incentive pay is in place right now?
So, currently, we have.
Language pay, right?
Language pay, the whole city has it, language pay, we have field training pay, and then we have certification pay. So, there are some other considerations for education pay, paying for the education you have.
Yeah.
We decided to go with the shift differential.
Yeah, that's much better.
We also talked about hiring bonus, but we decided to not do that as well. Because that doesn't really impact the people we have in-house.
Just throw money at the wall.
This would be a transformative change like nothing we've ever done before. You're talking somebody at step five would get an increase of $20,000 a year, that's crazy.
So I'll clarify that just a little bit. So the way we plan this out is, depending on where they are currently in the step plan, it's a little easier to see here. So let's just say an officer is in step four, that's $76,000. Or let's just say it's step six, $82,000. On this new plan, they would move to step two.
Ah, oh, okay.
I'm sorry, uh, eighty-two.
Step six, eighty-two, they would move to the next higher there, which would be eighty-five.
Which is eighty-five, so then. It'll put them in the pay plan, and then on their anniversary date, they would move to the next step. So October 1, they would move to whatever corresponding step is higher in this pay scale, on this pay scale, then the anniversary date, they would move to the next one.
Okay, I did not understand that.
That's, that seems pretty fair.
Because otherwise.
It's a significant increase even then.
Otherwise, like you say, we'd be $20,000 raises across the board for so many people, that'd be a huge cost to the city.
Yep.
You know, what we really tried to do is find the sweet spot, right? Like, we weren't trying to be the highest, but we definitely wanted to take into consideration that as soon as we do this, I know for a fact, just coming from the training I just went to with 150 other chiefs, everybody else is already working on theirs as well. I was at, I was at the conference with the Wiley chief, where he talked about the process they went through. So this is going to be a constant, you know, thing we have to look at every year. But I think the big, the big win in this, and thank you to, you know, the City Manager and the finance and everybody that helped us with this, is that condensing the steps, that was one of the first things the RPOA brought to my attention.
Nine is a lot.
Yeah, and nine, if you look, if, when we look at across our 18 agencies, is on the high end, if not the highest. There's a few others that are anomalies, but, so I think we're, you know, we're not the lowest, but we're, six steps is a pretty good place to be.
I just want us to run a scenario and let's compare this to what somewhere closer to the starting would be around 80, and then that would affect the other numbers as well. I want to see what that cost would be and, and let's consider that before we approve the final budget document.
Quick question, just for the chief, kind of philosophical question more than anything. So my, I guess my impression the last couple of years is every time we get up to this particular police, we're always scrambling. We never, we never seem to be ahead of it. It seems like this year, we're ahead of it. Is, I mean, has our methodology changed significantly that we're going to be this way instead of always being, you know, that there's 80 agencies out there and we're all like it was last year, trying to figure out, you know.
I think the short answer is yes, I think we're doing, we're looking at it in a different way than maybe we've looked at it in the past. As I said, we've sort of targeted the midpoint of those 18 agencies in the past, and that only took into really account primarily the base pay. And so we're looking at it much more, I don't love the word, but holistically is the best word I can think of. Taking in all the factors into consideration, as well as, as well as the incentives that are part of that broader picture. And I think this is the, this is similar to how agencies that are doing this within our competition region are also looking at it.
But, but it's not a one and done.
No, I understand, no, I understand, that's.
Next year, everybody's going to make their adjustments.
Yeah, but again, next year, I hope we're like we are now, where we're sort of ahead of it, and we're not just kind of dragging around, wait and see what everybody else is doing. I'm just, you know, I like this approach a lot more.
I mean, make no mistake, there's, there's an entire, you guys know the power of social media, there's an entire social media site dedicated to DFW police pay. It's, people pay attention to it. This will be blasted out across the state of Texas. And for a while, we'll be, there'll be a buzz about it.
Good. Two years ago, when we were doing our first budget, it was this huge leapfrog effort that we did. We tried to leapfrog a lot of agencies and now we've kind of slipped back into the back of the pack again, right? So it takes that constant.
Just when.
We were also looking at their past year, their prior year.
Yeah, it's, it's so tough because it's such a difficult labor market and there's never enough people that want to be police officers because what you guys do is incredibly hard. And so there's just tremendous demand and it leads to this kind of inflationary impact that you see with the cost of hiring officers. I would really like to see how that step plan is going to feed into the new step plan because if I'm an officer, I don't want this to be a disincentive, let's put it that way. If I'm an officer that's been here three years, under the current plan, I'm making 73, almost 74,000. Am I going to be making the same as an entry level officer that's coming into the agency tomorrow?
So initially, yes, and then you move to your step.
So is that a disincentive for our three-year tenured officers accidentally?
Yeah, so looking at it, it's, it's hard because there's only so much money to spread around, right? So we have to be considerate of that and the other departments in the city. You know, how do we spread that money evenly? So this was the kind of, I want to say the easiest, but the most feasible way to do it. So it's true, some people will see it that way, hey, you know, I'm making the same as an entry officer, but it's still more. After that, after your first year, your anniversary date, you're going to go from 73 to 81.
Right.
So you're still receiving a $9,000 raise.
Put a smile on that face, get over it.
There's something to think about.
It's hard to cure past ills, that's something that all of us in the city's face, right? If you weren't maybe properly compensated before, that's where they came in with these signing bonuses, which to your point is kind of throwing money against the wall, but it also created a disincentive for those who were there.
Right.
So you're moving them along, they'll be higher paid, they'll have compression in terms of, or kind of, they'll condense the steps. So the incentive is now, you don't want to leave us because before, your third, your fourth step, you weren't going to make as much. Your sixth step, you weren't going to make as much. So the incentive isn't necessarily, okay, I'm going to make, get this windfall this year. It's understanding that this agency is committed to providing me with a market competitive rate and we've condensed the steps so you top out faster. That's something that's very important in this field, and I think, so that's the point. I don't think, I mean, you can't speak for other people, but I don't think it will be a disincentive. They're not going back, they're not losing money, they wouldn't have made more money under the old system.
Right.
And now they won't make more money going to any other agency similarly situated.
I think you look also at the first 10 years on this old plan, you're going to make a significantly amount more money on this plan here in the first 10 years. So I think you have to look at it that way as well. So hopefully our officers see that and they realize they're going to be compensated more by introducing this plan.
It's all about perspective.
That's the trick, it's about perspective, and I think it has to be positioned that way from the command staff. This is what, this is what this is designed to address.
We're going to have to handle that perspective, and we've already had conversations on how do we deliver that message, so we're already working on that in the background. So we, we know that's going to be one of the concerns, but ultimately, this is going to be for the betterment of the department long term.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep.
I think this is so important because to any citizens out there who see this as a huge expense, what you have to take into consideration, what you may not see is the performance cost of being non-competitive. You know, when you have all that turnover, there's a reduction in performance, there's, there's an increase in liability because you don't have the cream of the crop or because you're not incentivizing the people that you do have who may have the ability, but they're not quite as incentivized to perform as well. So I think people need to take that into consideration.
You're losing money, you're losing an investment.
Yes.
Into that offer at least after three or four years.
Well, and what it, you know, that, the previous slide showed $100,000 in just replacement costs, I think it's actually more than that. That's only taking into consideration the cost to replace them, not the cost that we had already invested in them for maybe three, four, five years, and then they left. And just that alone is upwards of $5 million over the last three years.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to debt management.
We're switching here, we're going straight into supplemental.
Sorry, we're going straight into, I'm sorry, we're going into department supplemental request, thank you for reminding me, I knew I wouldn't forget. We're doing, we're doing department supplemental requests prior to debt management. I think, I think that's just a better, much better approach. This is the fun stuff. It's like going mall shopping, window shopping.
You can afford some of it, it's just not everything.
It's window shopping.
Yeah, it is.
It's like, oh, that looks great, but can't buy it, no money.
You hold it and then at the end.
Right. Hello again, for the third time in a row.
Should I introduce myself again?
Just forgot your name already.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Brittany Farr, Director of Economic and Community Engagement. Go ahead and get right into it. So my first step on a request is for a, what would be a third community engagement coordinator. As many of you know, the City of Rowlett puts on one or two events each year. And in addition to that, we've taken over the responsibility, which was previously housed in the Neighborhood Planning Department. So because of the number of events that we're doing here at the City of Rowlett and the team's desire to begin to elevate all of those events across the board, I'm respectfully requesting a third community engagement coordinator to help alleviate some of the burden that has been placed on my two absolute rock star community engagement coordinators, but also so we can start to dig into what I would consider to be true community engagement, and that is from, on behalf of the neighborhoods, what we're doing with neighborhood associations, what we're doing to bolster our presence in the community outside of just special events. So you see here, we do almost 100 city events each year, and with the full assumption of the neighborhood life function, this position would allow us to really focus on true community engagement, maintaining high standards for our events, really beefing up some of the events that I think have really good potential here in the city, but also really starting to dig in into that true community engagement aspect of what we do in the neighborhoods. So the initial cost for this would be a startup cost of $85,336. That's the base level salary and benefits in addition to things like computers, monitors, cell phone, those types of expenditures. And then an annual ongoing cost of $82,385 per year, and that is the base level salary and benefits. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that relatively straightforward.
So what is the actual salary?
The starting salary, I believe, is 59,000. It may, and I don't, I think that is not adjusted for.
It's not, and I think it's actually a little higher.
Ish.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, there's the scale we have, so it's somewhere in that scale.
And that's how we started the, that was the starting salary, we started the second community engagement coordinator.
And so can you tell me what your staff is right now?
The community engagement staff, the community engagement staff as a whole is a staff of five. We have a community engagement manager, we have two folks on the communication side, our award-winning Drew Riss and Ms. Fairan Bambico who does most of our social. Yeah, double award-winning, just wait till they see the bond election. And then Ms. Fairan Bambico who handles most of our social media, and then we have two community engagement coordinators. So I've got two ladies right now that are doing all of the heavy lifting with all of the events that we do, and they're, they're pretty maxed out right now.
See, let me give you a perspective, she's two and a, two and a quarter, two and a half, okay? Full transparency, we do have a manager that is also responsible for assisting those, but they do the base level work. So I don't want anyone to think that we're not trying to be very transparent, but it's about two and a half, two and a quarter.
And we, and we're nimble in our staffing and we try to be as equitable in how we deploy those resources. But there are some things from a communications standpoint that we want to elevate as well, which we'll get into in some of my other requests, so.
So just to be clear, this particular position will be the third of the community coordinators. You already have two, this will be.
Yes, sir.
In addition to that staff, that's where it's going to fit exactly.
Yes, sir. And we do, for what it's worth, have a, pardon me, a chunk of money that we inherited from the Parks Department that is dedicated right now to a, almost a half-time hourly position that comes in and provides additional staffing support for us when we're spread a little thin. And so I would take that position and modify that into a full-time community engagement coordinator. So we always have that third person for when we have things like the farmer's market. There was, on June 1st, we had three different events on one day, the Adopt-a-Thon, the Be City Seminar, and then the library kickoff. And so being able to have staff at every one of our events is very important.
So then is the cost of this position really a half person?
So yes and no, because what I, my understanding was that it, because it came from Parks, it wasn't, it actually, the money that was used to fund that position was not a staffing, was not staff funding, it was just money allocated to Parks and they used that funding to pay for those hourly positions, for that hourly position. But I'll look to my budget folks if I'm saying something wrong.
Yeah, I don't.
It was a weird.
So, I don't know that that's the path to go down because the reality is, you're making some changes that didn't require budget enhancements, some of those things are taken into consideration. I think the simplest way is this is going to be considered a full-time budget, a full-budget FTE addition to the budget.
And my other question, so are you going to replace the downtown manager? Or what is going to happen with that?
That's a great question, and so my, the, my future plan for my, for my two departments is for this person to take over the downtown manager events, so the series events, the farmer's markets, the concert series, and then have a position in economic development that focuses on economic development in the downtown area with the implementation of the downtown strategic plan. There's going to be a focus on economic development in the economic development department. And from, in my experience with the two different departments, you're looking for two completely separate skill sets in one individual, and we may get lucky and find a unicorn, or maybe the better allocation of resources is to divvy it up and have an economic development person focused on economic development and a community engagement person focused on the events in the downtown area.
So not necessarily just a downtown manager?
No, sir, I would not be replacing the downtown manager position.
But the money for the downtown manager that we had budgeted for last year is still available, and I'm going to guess it's less than that.
Yes, sir, and my intention with, with that funding is to hire an economic development specialist who would support my absolutely amazing assistant director and his assumption of the responsibilities for economic development in the downtown.
So you somewhat earmark that for the next position.
Yes, sir. There's some, there's some, I think, yeah, there's some reorging going on in my brain right now, so.
Okay, next slide, this is, oh, I'm so excited. Yes.
Do I need to say anything? So the, it is worth noting that industry standard is a complete upgrade to a website. Every two to three years in a municipal government, it's three to four years. We haven't updated ours since 2017. For those of you who spend any amount of time on rowlett.com, it is clunky, it is cluttered, it is not user-friendly, and it is in desperate need of a redesign. We've started talking with some of the larger providers that do this type of work, just spitballing what the cost of something like that would be for better functionality and user interface across the board, and we're requesting $27,500 to start that process. Anyone who's ever been through a website redesign knows that's a long tedious process, so it will take some time, but it is much needed and would really help our residents navigate. We could look at consolidating different technology functions, you're all shaking your heads, so I'll stop talking.
So we've, I was going to say, we probably should have shown you the list of things that have been administratively approved that I said, okay, we're going to put them in because operationally they need to happen, this is one of those things. I still wanted them to be able to tell you and quickly just run through them with you and hit so you'd be aware, but this is already integrated into the budget and the budget modeling, unless you tell me to take it out, it's in there.
Don't you dare take it out. You know, this is the first impression that people have of our citizens, the developers, the partners, regional partners we work with, everybody looks to the website to get that first impression, and ours is frankly horrible.
And to make it better for this too, because so many people are not going here, they're going here. So the mobile functionality, I'm so glad you said that because, oh, sorry.
This cannot be lipstick on a pig, it's got to be a content redesign as well. It can't just be update the UI, make it pretty, make it more functional without addressing the content issues that we have.
Civic Plus is good at putting lipstick on a pig.
And if it takes more money than that, I'm okay with that.
And another feature would be ADA accessibility, we have new requirements from an ADA accessibility standpoint, but I couldn't agree more, I could not agree more, it will not be lipstick on a pig.
Thank you.
So that leads me to my next one. Which is a website redesign for Rowlett on the Move, which is our economic development website.
It's even worse.
I, you said it, sir, not me. I am a big believer in not reinventing the wheel, so I've taken, one of the first things I did when I came on is take a look at what some of our bigger competitors are doing, what are the Planos, the Friscos, the colonies of the world doing with their economic development website? And as the Mayor Pro Ten just indicated, this is really our first foray into what, when a business or developer wants to move in, they're not going to call me and ask me what our demographics are, they're going to go to our website. And the way that the website is laid out right now is not intuitive, it doesn't give the information that they need. And this, what I'm recommending is a partial redesign because there's good bones there. We just need to think about how the, the information is organized in a way, and that we're putting out the data that we need for these folks to make the decision to pick up the phone and call me or Charles afterwards because they're always going to go here first. And this is why, kind of going back to what we're doing with economic development, having a specialist position is so important to keep this information up to date, making sure that the information is looking clean and easy to find so they do pick up the phone and want to come out and see what we have to offer them.
It's in there, it's approved. So the point is showing this, you guys, and this is for the whole team, when it's approved, we want council to know, but you don't have to give them the whole sales spiel, right? You save that for stuff that they've got approved that, that I wasn't going to step into.
This is a little outside the scope of a website redesign, but have you even thought to unifying our branding so that we don't have a separate economic development brand?
Yes, sir.
I asked her, she told me no.
Don't listen, no, but that's part, and that's part of why the elevation of the community, the community engagement manager, thinking about a cohesive branding, they should all talk to one another. They can look different, but same color scheme, same design. You should look at it and know it's the City of Rowlett, whether it's the economic development team, the Parks and Recreation team, and I'll stop talking because I can feel David looking at me.
And we need not just, we need not just SEO for Google and those search engines, but also site, within the site search is terrible on our sites. We need to be able to search within the site and actually find what we're looking for. We need to be able to search within the site and actually find what we're looking for.
And that's all I have for economic and community engagement, I'll be back for Parks though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Fire.
Fire.
Fire, man, that would put a lot of money on.
Someone play the Ring of Fire theme song.
Sitting down thing. Oh, that's really low. Good afternoon, mayor, council, staff, thank you for having me again this afternoon. For fiscal year 2025, Fire Department will bring one supplemental request forward. This supplemental request is for the rear driving positions on the tiller truck. As you guys may be aware, this vehicle is scheduled to be delivered in the first part of fiscal year 2025. This request is strictly for the promotional cost, as the current personnel needed to staff this piece of equipment are already a part of our current FTE allotment. Basically, due to the complexity and the nature of the vehicle and its operation, staff recommends that all personnel assigned to really any driving position, but the rear driving position of the tiller truck be trained and assigned as a driver operator in the department. In evaluating other jurisdictions that have a tiller truck, what we found is the implementation process takes about six to nine months to actually in-service everybody and get that vehicle ready to, for operations. And really, that has a lot to do with the amount of training that's needed to be able to safely and effectively operate that vehicle, not only on the street, but on emergency scenes.
Did you say we're taking delivery of this? Did you say that? I must have.
The first part of 2025.
Okay, thank you.
So right now, I'm thinking October, November, by the time it's done through make-ready and everything. So there's a pretty thorough training process involved with the tiller truck. It starts with a pretty robust manufacturer in-service on the vehicle itself, followed by training by a professional third-party instructor. The cost for that training has already been included in the cost of the vehicle, so there'll be no additional cost for that. And then we will follow that up with extensive in-house truck and tiller training for all the drivers assigned to that rig. We anticipate that, well, this training will obviously cover emergency and non-emergency driving, placement, and then scene operations. Approval of the promotions for the fiscal year 2025 budget provides us an opportunity to conduct in-house promotional processes and complete the required training ahead of an estimated in-service date for the vehicle. The financial impact for fiscal year 2025 is estimated to be $40,161. I think ongoing years will change a little bit as people advance in the pay scale, but that is strictly for the cost between the individual and the promoted position, so.
How many individuals?
It'll be three. Three promotions from firefighter to driver, so that we can staff this vehicle with.
So basically, this is like the, the one request where we don't have a choice, sorry.
It's already approved. It's already in budget. You guys may have mentioned that, it's already, when they were, I'm in, it's already approved.
The, the training is already in, the training to budget, budget for the department as well?
Yes. So the training was actually budgeted as part of the vehicle.
Yeah.
Because we, we understood from the very beginning that it was a pretty unique, pretty complex and challenging vehicle to operate, and so that was already included from day one, so there'll be no additional cost for that.
Is there a side benefit also of having more driver engineers, of just allowing flexibility within a station? Does that, does that help at all, or is it really just targeted at this specific rig?
Are you talking about in general having more driver engineers?
Yeah.
I think it, obviously, this is apparatus-dependent. This is the only apparatus that we're going to have in the city that's going to actually have two driver engineers assigned to it. They'll be assigned to this unit. I don't, in terms of the overall department, I don't know that having any additional driver engineers would provide any more flexibility, but being able to have a driver engineer assigned to that rear driving position definitely improves the quality, I think, in my opinion, the performance that we're going to get from those positions, given the nature of the apparatus.
You don't want to put just a, just a firefighter in, in that seat of a $2.7 million piece of equipment?
So that brings up another point, is how do we plan to staff this as we go forward, right? Because people will need time off, and at least temporarily, until we can move to, you know, tier out some additional training and identify maybe some individuals that be qualified, we're going to want to backfill this with driver engineers that have been trained in the program, so. Yes, sir.
Okay, so the $40,000 that we're asking for right now is essentially the, the wage gap between what they're getting, and that'll be their promotional, so that, for three positions, that's basically what that's for, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then we're looking at doing this every year. So is that, and you did say that they could fluctuate, but will that again, I mean, that, just to ask it simply, I guess, do you anticipate another three individuals having that wage gap, or, or is that just sort of a placeholder number?
No, sir, it's a one-time promotion. The ongoing cost is associated with their move in the step pen from step, like, one to step two in the driver operator scale.
Okay, that makes sense, I got you, I got you.
All right. Nothing else?
That was it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Joey. Hi, Joy.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to give my spiel about our budget. Can we go to the next one? Before I start this, I would like to say I did receive an extra position last year. I appreciate that greatly. That position is dedicated to our ERP, so I now have two people dedicated to our ERP.
What is that?
Enterprise Resource Planning.
Thank you.
Walked over each other, huh? Enterprise Resource Planning. Thank you.
It's a piece of software to help.
Yep. Not a clue. Thank you.
That said, I am asking for another one, position that is. This was, my slides are in order of, of, I guess, rank, how I want them. This was a request last year, this has been a request for probably the past five years.
I think more.
The executive team rated it number two last year. It's, it's a public safety IT guy, basically. I used to be this position. We do not have this position, we just have someone, a lieutenant that is trained to be a lieutenant, doing IT support for our police department. When they moved, when they moved me out of PD, we picked two people in PD and kind of trained them up, gave them some more access, and one of them has done real well with it. But we believe that person will be retiring in January, and if that happens, that will leave a hole in my department for this department. And to fill that hole, all the other departments are going to receive a lower service level because I'll have to push, the, the resources that I have on the city right now, I'll have to share with PD as well. If I could get this approved and get them in, we could do some knowledge transfer with the, with the current person that's doing it over the lieutenant, and then give him a lieutenant back.
Was this already, was this one already put into the budget?
No.
Okay.
I won't let you know. But if you look at the, the table, I'm comparing the city and public safety departments from 2015 to now, and both the city and public safety have increased over 33%. My department has increased 14%. Public safety IT obviously went to nothing. It's like my department's not really growing with the city. You know, more people means more devices, more things to support. We're about to build a new fire station, maybe two, that's going to increase. So that's pretty much my, my support for this position. Any questions on it?
Well, I don't think a police officer, a lieutenant, should be tasked with providing IT support services. I mean, city operations are totally dependent on IT these days, and the fact that we have, yeah, just looking at your little table there, ridiculous. I totally support this. What is the actual salary, Joe?
Ooh, I want to say 80, 78, or 80, maybe a little more.
That'd be the start, that'd be the minimum, right?
Correct. And it would be an actual system administrator, but they would be doing a lot of desktop support, which I'm kind of getting the weeds.
And they would be dedicated to the public safety?
Police and fire, yes.
Office scene, where?
That would be, I would probably have to work with him to see if I can get a desk over there. If not, then I'll cram him in my area, and they'll just go back and forth.
Ideally, that individual would be...
We're going to put a cubicle in chief's office.
Yeah, because they have so much extra space.
Yeah, we may, and I'll meet, talk to both of them, actually. But I used to be this position, and I...
I was going to say the same thing, Deb said, just looking at that chart alone, to me validates, whereas, you know, we've seen a 36% increase in staff in the city, and you're only 14, I mean, you can't, you can't continue to support such a growth in city employees and not, not bring along the IT staff. Yeah, that's my full support.
Me too.
I support this as well. Maybe you mentioned this, but maybe I missed it, the 2025 cost, why is it the ongoing cost going down?
The equipment, mainly, equipment and licensing. Any other comments or questions? Okay. This is in the budget, it was approved, I'll go over it. It's not just help desk, it's inventory, it also helps us manage patches, 90, over 90% of, of, when an agency gets breached, usually it's because they're not patched, and this will help automate that as well. It'll also help us with software license compliance, which is a big deal with Microsoft. Any questions, comments?
And that's already contained in the...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And the last is an extra GIS analyst. As you guys know, the city's growing, our maps change a lot. I have two people right now, I have a manager and a GIS analyst. I would like to get another one and dedicate it to PD and community development, maybe Public Works. Actually, I probably have the other person on Public Works. I know that PD wanted, had a crime analyst, and they sent them to GIS training, but they're no longer with the city. I believe you've got another one now currently?
Yes, sir.
And that would, that will rely heavily on GIS. Also, our asset management, planning and development system, and our 911 system are based on GIS, the mapping. So that's all I've got for this.
This is not in the budget?
No, that is correct.
For a city our size, what is the typical number of GIS personnel to administer their GIS? Because I can't imagine between cities what the software supports, I can't imagine it's too much different, so.
It, it depends on how many systems they have relying on GIS. I would say for ours, probably about two.
How many?
Probably about two.
And how many do we have?
Two.
Two without this.
I was going to say, actually, thank you, because I looked at a number of cities, one of the reasons I didn't put this in administrative leave is because the number I found when I looked at Mansfield and, and Farmer's Branch and, I don't know, the comparable, North Richland Hills, they had two. So I actually appreciate your candor and honesty very much.
So Mr. City Manager, can I get your opinion on why you did not include the public safety IT support?
Yeah, I, I will, and I will say this with no intent, Joey's been great. I'm looking at every operation mostly and saying, prove it to me with data, prove it to me that you've allocated the bodies in the right places and performing at the highest of levels. I've been here a year, everyone hasn't had time to do that. So everyone's going to tell me they need more people. I, I'll use Brittany's as a great example. I, I think they need more people, I really do. I didn't put it in because I can't really prove it, I think they do. So this gives them the opportunity to make their case to you, but that's why those weren't put in, it just wasn't terribly obvious that they needed these positions. So that's why. I'm not, it doesn't mean that they don't, it just means there wasn't a compelling case that, that could be made beyond what I'll call the sales pitch. I mean, these, this number is an interesting number, but if you subtract the, anyway. So it doesn't mean because I didn't include it that I don't support it, it doesn't mean that I do, but it still doesn't mean you can't put it in, right? I mean, you know that, so.
Joey, on the, on the help desk and software, the initial cost, I assume, is some sort of implementation cost before you...
The licensing.
And then it's $9,000 ongoing after that?
Correct, maintenance.
Thank you.
Sure.
So the ask is for two employees, if, if the decision is made that we can really only afford one, would that be the public safety IT support would be your, would be the bigger ask?
100%. Yes, definitely. Anyone else? That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Who's up next?
Next on the block.
All right, no more after this, all right.
I'm done.
Are you getting paid by the presentation?
Can, can you just tell them that actually administratively approved all of these, and they can just see what they are?
We've administratively approved both of these, so let me show you what they are. Hi, Brittany Far, Director of Economic and Community Engagement. The first is an upgrade for our WebTrack application, which is the external-facing software that our customers use to book classes at the RCC.
Thank you.
Yes, we're going to drag it...
Your software is terrible.
We're going to, to the 20th century at least, possibly the 21st. Yep, so it'll allow real-time notifications, user interface, just an overview, user experience is going to be one of the things you hear coming out of me quite a bit in FY '25. Any questions about this one?
Is this already funded?
Yes, sir.
I, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
This, this also means that the desktop stuff in the RCC is also going to be upgraded?
This is the external, this is what, this is what folks will use to book their own, on their own mobile devices. So they can still come in, they could still do it, however, this is just an upgrade to the external-facing software.
And does the actual rec center sop, need, software need to be upgraded as well?
So we've done some modifications over the course of this year that make it a little bit easier to navigate on our end. We're looking into it right now, but we know I can sit here and look in the whites of your eyes and tell you we need this from an external-facing software.
Absolutely.
Give me a little bit more time to do some digging into Parks and Rec, and I suspect you'll have more supplemental requests coming from me in FY '26.
Okay.
I'm just planting the seed. The second is for a PA system in the RCC. This would allow for us to make notifications RCC-wide in case of emergency, when things are closing. This has already been administratively approved as well. Startup cost of $17,000 to implement the system, and then an ongoing cost of $600 to maintain it moving forward.
Yep.
You've had enough of me.
Pretty easy.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, bye.
That concludes, that concludes Parks and Rec.
Bye, no more.
Thank you.
All right. All right, good afternoon, mayor and council. I'll start this off by saying that none of these have been incorporated into the budget yet. So this is truly our spiel.
All of that other money wasn't enough, apparently. I know, or at least...
So thank you for allowing us to give our spiel, I love that word.
Did you learn that, did you know that before coming to Texas, or is that something that we just do?
No, I've, I've heard the word.
I don't know, curious.
So we have, we have five requests before you today. Three of the five requests are going to be for dispatchers, or communications officers, as we call them. As you know, in past years, when you think public safety or you think law enforcement, you, you visualize a police officer in a uniform, and, and so do I. However, having worked in the field now almost 25 years, the dispatchers are oftentimes forgotten about, about how important they are to the success of the overall mission of the department. And so I did not take this lightly when we put this together, not asking for police officers. In fact, my own staff has, has come to me and said, chief, actually, we need a break from, we need to catch up with what we have in terms of the officers. As I mentioned in the earlier presentation, 19 to 25 and training at any given time, it's 19 right now. We barely have enough FTOs to train what we have. And so they've asked for a pause so that we can catch up. And so they've asked for a pause so that we can catch up. So this is actually a perfect opportunity to focus on another area that has been neglected to some degree, and that's our dispatch center. So three of the five are for dispatchers, and I'll explain to you why three, why three is significant. But first, obviously, you know from seeing previous data, there's been a large number of increases in overall calls for service, particularly in the last year because of, good news, our officer proactivity. It's not just because we're that much busier with nine-one-one calls, although we are. But every call that goes into the dispatch center from a citizen, from our officers over the radio, or from the chief calling saying, hey, can you tell me what's going on on X Street? Is an impacted dispatch. And there's a lot of those that go unaccounted for. They, they support police, fire, and EMS, which is not always the case. Many, many don't, dispatch centers don't support EMS. So what this does, the benefits is, is it's going to reduce overtime, burnout, turnover, and liability. Ultimately, from my overseeing communication centers in the past, what I, what I call our staffing is what I call a zero staffing model, which means that with the amount of dispatchers that we have, if anything happens, whether someone calls in sick, someone takes a vacation day, it's automatic overtime. So unlike some departments where someone takes a day off, you can manage, you can kind of get by, no one has to get called in, every single time that happens, somebody has to get called back in. Meaning, meaning zero staffing. We don't have a surplus to address and plan for vacations and sick time. And so that's a significant impact on the dispatchers, to the extent that, and I'll say this candidly, I've had the spidey senses, if you will, for, since I've been here regarding our dispatch center. Because I happen to know anecdotally that we have several dispatchers that have applied to other dispatch centers, and we've had a communications supervisor actually step down because of the burnout. Now, the good news is they don't want to leave. I've sat, I've spent considerable time in our communication center. This is probably my biggest area of concern in our department, and the reason is if we lose dispatchers and we end up with two or three that leave at the same time, they, it's happened before. The only people that can work in the dispatch center are really police officers and firefighters that have some kind of level, basic level of training. And frankly, they're, they're not the best ones to do it. So we don't want to get to that, because the impacts of that are, there's, there's now, Chief Cofield is trying to figure out how to backfill his firefighters. I'm trying to figure out how to get officers back out on the street. We're not reducing, you know, our impacted proactivity and reducing crime is all impacted.
So this isn't, clarifying, this isn't about adding a position. This is about providing us a reserve, like assistance for the main
So that's the next point. So what this, what this will allow us to do is establish four communications officers per shift with a minimum staffing of three, meaning we've built in, knowing that you should always plan, someone's going to be off, someone's going to have vacation, someone's going to be calling in sick. It gives us that little bit of a cushion. It allows them to take a day off and not have to worry about getting called back in on their, on the, on their day off. It'll also increase, improve our supervision and our distribution of the workload, meaning our, our shift supervisors are actually just dispatchers right now. There, there is very little supervision that can go on, because they're having to wear a headset, they're having to take the nine-one-one calls, they're having to dispatch the calls because of the shortage that we have. It'll allow us to do better job of scheduling and place our communications officers at the, increase the number of staffing during peak hours. We know that the busy time is between eleven AM and seven PM in dispatch, so we'll be able to adjust the schedules accordingly to make sure we have enough communications officers when it's, when it's the busiest time on the radio, et cetera. And overall, and then the significance of the three is if we're able to add three dispatchers, that is what allows us to establish four per shift. Giving us one dispatcher isn't going to do that. Giving us three will allow us to establish a true four per shift, four different shifts, with a minimum staffing of three, and it will allow us to create what we call TCIC, NCIC channel. Everything done in the Police and Fire Department is operated off one radio channel. And so we can move to attack channel when there's a fire, when there's an incident going on. But the general day-to-day traffic stops, and then when someone's running somebody over the air for wants and warrants, the name, the data burst, social security number, all that's coming over one channel, which becomes a safety issue during the peak times when officers can't get on the radio, when they're dealing with someone that's not cooperative or whatever.
What is the current head count? Is it nine, and you want to add three?
So, so the, the graph here over to the upper right will show you that we're currently at thirteen dispatchers and two supervisors. So you can see over the course of twenty years, it has remained relatively stable. There have been a few ups, increases, and they played with some staffing, the way they staff a manager that's non-sworn. They used to staff it with a sworn person, but for the most part, it's remained at fifteen or so employees for twenty years.
I got you, okay.
Particularly over the last four or five years, we've, we've had the same number, thirteen dispatchers and two supervisors.
So Chief, will this allow your shift supervisors to truly be, truly be
It, it will allow them to supervise more often. They're still going to have to fill in as dispatchers, even with three. Even if we get three, because again, someone takes a day off, they're now there, they're, they're going to be handling calls and answering things, but it allows them certainly a more, a larger percentage of their time. And we're going to staff it smartly. In other words, you know, the, between midnight and four AM is typically the slowest time, so we'll be able to adjust and hopefully get some cost savings in relation to overtime. But the answer to that question is yes, they'll be able to supervise, but more often as a primary role, but not all the time. And most comm centers, I don't think they're only supervising, they almost act as a quarterback, if you will, when there's a major incident. The dispatch supervisor is sort of there to make sure things are being covered that need to be covered. Agencies are being notified if there's a pursuit going on, if the dispatcher is overwhelmed and doesn't have time to, you know, get on the air to, to, to give that information.
We have the technology and space to add another full-time
We do, we do. We, we have four, three, or four consoles, and we're working on a fifth console that's in the budget. And so we, we do currently, and we also, you know, obviously, we're going to be getting a new communication center, so we'll, we'll be able to grow.
Chief, do you have any information from other cities with the same, basically the same number of officers? As how many dispatchers they have?
Well, we just went and toured Mansfield, for example. Similar-sized agency, maybe a little bit bigger, so good, good agency to look at as we're growing. And they have a significantly large, larger number of professional staff employees in general, but their communication center has
They have like twenty, twenty-three, somewhere around there?
Twenty-three dispatchers.
They don't even have enough going on in that town.
Oh, yeah, they do.
Really?
Mansfield? Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Now, I believe they
Their budget's significantly bigger, their commercial corridor is exponentially bigger than ours.
I believe they might
Population's even a little larger, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no. I believe they might cover more than one jurisdiction, too? No? Okay, maybe not. I'm thinking of another one. Just a couple of other stats to consider on this. Overall, dispatched just for police, we've seen a twelve percent increase in, in police calls. Fire EMS services over the, over the last year, we've seen a fifty-six percent increase. I'm sorry, this is over the past five years, I misspoke. Over the past five years, twelve percent police, fifty-six percent dispatched for fire and EMS, twenty percent, a little more than that, increase in overall call volume. And I think those are the most compelling.
Well, I think the key thing here is, that you said is, this is a safety issue. It's officer safety, and ultimately then also citizen safety, if officers can't get on the radio when they need to get on the radio.
Yeah. And I, you know, it did make me feel just a little better when, when, you know, when I spent some time in communications, they said, Chief, it's not that we want to leave, that nobody really wants to start over, especially if you've been here five, six, ten years and go to a new agency. But the impact on their health, their mental health, their physical health, their family lives is significant when they, they really just don't get any break, and they're being called back in regularly on their days off.
It's already such a stressful job. I mean, it's almost analogous to being an air traffic controller. You're there, you're, you're trying to, you, you have responsibility for these people out in the field, but you're not out there. You can't, there's a feeling of helplessness. I've done it temporarily, and I know it's harder than being a police officer, in a lot of ways.
Yeah, you're not, you're right.
Okay, any other questions on that one? The, the second request, or the second of our five is, is for a records clerk. So there's a couple of key, key things here with the records clerks. We currently have two clerks and one supervisor, and that staffing has remained the same for the past thirty years.
Wow.
Now, now, the job of the records clerk is, is what's, it's a customer service, they work the window, they handle the, the citizens that come in and ask for copies of their reports. That hasn't changed. But what has changed dramatically is complying with the legal requirements that we now have to comply with, particularly with open records requests, which often results in staff time to review, watch body worn camera video, listen to nine-one-one calls in audio, and then conduct redactions. And so that's, that's one of the most significant reasons for this request, aside from just thirty years of no staffing increase, despite the growth and, and workload. We have, we have seen a request, an increase in about forty-five percent just from officers, just from more arrests, more reports that are taken. They have to review and read every single report that's taken by the police department. But on the open records request, the body worn camera, the, the redactions, one fifteen-minute traffic stop currently takes an hour to redact. This isn't something that, so this, imagine a day where there's two, two staffing working. And they're, they're, they're working the window, they're addressing the customer service needs of the public as they come in. But when you're conducting a redaction, and you have to wear the headset, and you're listening, and you're watching the video, it's not something that can be interrupted, really, to be done effectively, and to ensure that we're, we're not leaving something in a video that could actually be a liability concern for us, like personal history information and things like that. But one, one fifteen-minute video takes up to an hour, and they're doing upwards of sometimes forty of those per week. That varies, that'd be on the high side. But just that alone has been a significant change in what the job really requires. And so that's the most compelling reason for this request, aside from just the staffing remaining the same. So you see the open records request by year there, going up on the upper right-hand corner. So that additional open records, that time needed, it really is to play catch-up with the state mandated requirements and the amount of time to conduct those open records requests, causes overtime, it causes impacts to the staff. Again, they can't take days off. We're having to have a police officer work at least some, some of the week in records to help them keep up. So it's an operational efficiency factor. It's also a health and wellness factor, as it is for the dispatchers, because they're having to watch and listen to a lot of this video and radio traffic. And, and so this will, this will provide some relief by increasing the staffing by one.
Just to add to the redaction portion of that, so let's say it's a major incident, and someone requests, open records request for that scene. If it's four or five officers on scene, they have to redact videos for all four, five of those officers. So you can just see how that time compiles when they start doing the redactions.
Yeah. Any other questions on that one?
No.
Are these in your order of priority?
Yes. What, what I did on the order of priority is, is I have a dispatcher, a records, a dispatcher, dispatcher, quartermaster. This would be the final, this would be number five in the order. So this is a unique request, because some years ago, at some point, one of the chiefs recognized the need to create a quartermaster position within the police department. What a quartermaster does is addresses property and inventory, issuing of equipment, uniforms, guns, belts, hats, you name it. Ordering all, all the new things for new officers, and then managing assets, property, and all of the assets that a police department has. There's currently, there was, there is no position on the books for this. So it doesn't exist. However, some years ago, one of the chiefs saw the, the need for this, and I don't know if they made the request or not, but they, they, they didn't create the position, and instead they took our existing staffing within our property and evidence section. So our property and evidence that is a, is a non-sworn position, we have two of them, and so we have two full-time property and evidence technicians. That's, that should be their full-time jobs. That's to manage all of our guns, drugs, money, the things that come into our property and evidence section, evidence that's impounded by officers. They manage the intake and also the dispositions to get rid of evidence, so our shelves aren't overflowing. They, at some point, that, one of those chiefs took one of those positions and said, half of your job now is, you're only part-time property evidence, and the other half of your job is quartermaster. And frankly, most of what she does is quartermaster-related, because of the amount of work that's required in that role. Just a side note, literally, last Thursday, we learned that our part-time property and evidence, and I should say our part-time quartermaster is retiring at the end of this month. And she actually want, wanted, she's interested in a part-time position. And I think, and I know have, I'm going to shoot myself in the foot here, but if there isn't enough in the budget or for your consideration, I would rather have this as part-time than not at all. Truly on the books, part-time, not pulling from my property and evidence to create a part-time position. I think there's enough work for a full-time, but I think it could be done as a part-time, a truly dedicated part-time position. Does that make sense? So some of the things that they, they do is, is really a big part of the quartermaster's job in the police department that we have not done a very good job of over the years, largely because there's not someone to do it, but also because we don't have any systems to do it, is managing our inventory and our assets. So ensuring that we're replacing soft body armor, like I'm wearing today, before it expires. That we have someone that's dedicated to ensure that our ballistic helmets aren't expired before we find out we have ten or twelve of them that are expired, and now it's forty thousand dollars, instead of, it could have been addressed, you know, replaced several each year. And to manage an inventory properly is an area for improvement in the police department, and I, and I think dedicating somebody to do that could certainly be helpful in that aspect. As you know, I moved one of my full-time sergeants. One of the hats they wear is actually supervising our property and evidence in this quartermaster position. The reason for that is, when you go to new chief training, which is there, that actually exists, I had to go to that in my first year, the new chief training, one of the main, one of the top areas of risk and liability for a police department and for a city is your property and evidence section, because as I mentioned, the guns, the drugs, the money, that has to properly be, be maintained. And so by pulling one of my two employees and spending half of their time doing with all the quartermaster stuff, I think we're opening ourselves up a bit. And so this sort of seeks to solve two pretty big problems.
This is not a sworn position?
This, this would be a non-sworn position, that's right.
Would the quartermaster also be the armor?
No, quartermaster would not be the armor. Armor would be for a sworn position for maintaining weapons and things like that. So just a few other stats, and I'll close out. Seven, we've seen a seventy percent increase in property intakes since 2013, so that's property and evidence that's being impounded by our officers, just with the growth and the, and, and officers making more arrests. We've seen about a twenty-eight percent increase in our overall department personnel since 2013, which requires more management of those assets and inventories. And our total intake of property value has increased every year on average of two hundred and thirty-two items. With each officer hired, we're issuing an additional fifty-eight additional items to those officers, so that person would manage all of that additional workload.
Yay.
Yay. So David, this, I believe, is reserved for later.
Well, it is. I mean, we've put it in there. We've kind of said we can fund it via a number of mechanisms, be CO or CO, what's the other funding?
Seizure.
Seizure or combination therein. So there, there are multiple funding options for this.
So I'll briefly go over this. This isn't one of our five. This, this actually was, is also going to be in the later presentations on, on capital assets. What I'll say about the Bearcat is, so you all know we have an MRAP, mine resistant, I forget what it, what it stands for. It's a military vehicle. It's, it is a, we're happy to have it. We obtained it through military surplus quite a few years ago. It's well beyond its useful life. It is not designed, it's not a modern police vehicle, it's not designed for an urban municipal environment. It's, it's exceeds over forty thousand pounds. It's really, not really safe to be driving on our streets, especially on the highway. What the modern solution to that is commonly referred to as a Bearcat. Lenko is one of the companies that makes them. It's kind of the industry standard. In modern law enforcement, when you see the news and you see major incidents, you're, I promise you, you're probably seeing a Bearcat. Through my career, I've utilized these. They're really the bread and butter for your police department in high-risk situations. It should be almost like connected at the hip to your SWAT team, everything that they do. The Bearcat is a piece of valuable armor, that's a rescue vehicle, that really should be utilized on, on all missions. And because of the limitations of our MRAP, it really hasn't been. It's, it's not reliable. I don't trust it. We've had an officer do a good job of maintaining it in-house as best as they can. He's no longer here with us. So I think this is a, for the size of our department, and is with the increase in our proactivity, with our PSU unit and CID, doing more proactive work that's going to result in high-risk search warrants and things like that, this would be utilized in that capacity, and I think is a, and is important investment as we grow.
And this is already included? Is this already included?
More or less. I don't know, did we, did we place that? Where did we place it?
I saw it in the CO.
Is it?
Yeah. It's still an opportunity, but it's opportunity for CO issuance is what I saw.
Because it is, because there are multiple sources for this.
Right. Because it's a capital item. So it, you know, we, we don't have to pay for this via general fund, which shouldn't.
Or seizure, right? Seizure eligible, and that's why I don't think we categorize it anywhere else. Ideally, it should be in COs.
Yeah.
So what would you do with the MRAP?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
I think we have to either return it or keep it.
More than likely, there's a process to return it. There's, there may be a, a small agency out there that, I, I don't even know if they would reissue it. It's, it's very old.
It's like an '07, it was deployed in Afghanistan. It's beat the heck up.
They're designed for the battlefield. They're not designed for a municipal, really, environment.
So, so how many times have we deployed the MRAP to a scene, if ever?
Ooh, I can count.
Just since Chief Hodgins was on the SWAT team for several years.
It's probably been less than five.
I was, yeah, I was going to say three.
How many times would we have deployed a more capable vehicle like this?
Every time. Yeah. So we would take this on every search warrant we go on from here on out.
So that, to me, that's the answer, right?
Yeah.
It's a good visual deterrent.
Well, and, and.
We're not using a piece of equipment we have because it doesn't work well, when we could be using a piece of equipment we can use.
Well, and also the SWAT team, right, was, there's a, somewhat of a new SWAT team, their tactics are changing, things were kind of, the approach of our SWAT team is different than it was before as well. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the MRAP, because of the weight, it, it, I, I'm concerned about utilizing it the way it should be utilized with our SWAT team for these high-risk warrants because it will get stuck. It's just too heavy to really have on residential streets and oftentimes getting it stuck isn't going to be easy to get it out at the, I'm sure NTX could help, but it's not something that is ideal for sure.
Cert can take it. No, okay, I'm, I'm good with this, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any, any other questions related to the request? So do we want to, David, do we want to kind of provide a consensus on these items now or?
We thought we'd go back because we've got a whole sheet and all of those stuff for you.
I like that.
We can always reference back these presentations if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to save all that for last, give you the info. We got, they're going to pull up a spreadsheet and much like.
I would prefer the full context before.
You're going to save it when we're brain dead, bro?
That's right.
Okay.
More pliable.
Public Works.
Let us know when there's, y'all must supply.
All right. I'm excited about these items.
All righty. Awesome. Well, thank you for giving me a second to present to you on behalf of the two assistant directors for Public Works. So let's move forward. So the first item you have before you today is a building maintenance technician. As you may or may not know, there is currently one building maintenance supervisor and one building maintenance technician. They had 805 work orders in calendar year 2023. At the time this presentation was put together, there was a currently approximately 138 open requests. And this will utilize the one building maintenance technician on staff for special projects, which extends the linked time of work orders and how long they're open. So essentially with only two individuals, the supervisor's not actually being able to act as a supervisor. And we have many tasks that are being taken place with the work orders that actually require two individuals to deploy. So this position would assist with work orders as well as preventative maintenance on all facilities. And we currently have 11 facilities that we're maintaining.
So this is not in the budget? Is this in the budget?
It is not, sir. I have two that are in the budget and I'll let you know when those have already been added. So this is not. So this is the first item before you. Any questions? Okay. So the second item before you is a Bobcat compact track loader. The important piece about this is as you're aware, aware of, we are moving from having external crews doing our concrete and asphalt replacement to be having internal crews do our concrete and asphalt replacement. Currently, we do not have this piece of equipment. So we are utilizing the parks and the water divisions' equipment in order to make this happen. And it'll be used to help remove breakup and backfill concrete along with asphalt level ups and flex space installation. And it is essential to the operation of both the asphalt and concrete crews that we have deployed in-house. Any questions on this one?
How much longer is it practical to continue borrowing from parks and water department?
If you talk to Chris Patterson, he would say it is not practical to do so and he needs this piece of equipment to run his operation effectively.
Today?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we put this in?
This Z Sprayer Max stand-on sprayer has already been approved through the city manager's approval. This is basically this and the piece of equipment that I'm going to mention to you next are two pieces of equipment in order to bring in-house parks maintenance into the city. As you're well aware, park maintenance has been moved under Chris Patterson. I will also mention that our new park maintenance supervisor started last Monday and he has hit the ground running with looking at how he can move forward with better utilizing not only the equipment, but also the maintenance of all the facilities. So this Z Max stand-on sprayer will help assist with that. And ultimately, the goal, as you can see at the bottom, is to eliminate the contract with TruGreen and have this being done in-house.
How much are we spending on TruGreen?
You know, I knew you were going to ask me that and I don't. Okay, 40,000.
And I've never seen them at, okay. I have never seen them in the city.
Thank you, David.
That's the way I work my yard as well.
Yeah.
Be careful, we're on camera. You're a great company, we just don't know how to serve us.
We're spending 40,000 a year on TruGreen. We bring it in-house, pay roughly 20,000 for a piece of equipment. What's the ongoing cost to purchase stuff to apply, chemicals?
We have not done that evaluation, but happy to do so.
You think it's a net savings?
Um.
Overall?
I cannot answer that question effectively and don't feel like I should give you an incorrect answer.
I don't think the driver has been a cost savings necessarily, there may prove to be one. They did enhance the, the budget for the supplies a little bit. Couldn't tell you what the number is. The driver isn't net savings, there may be some. It's performance, the ability to control what's happening, when it's happening, and to the point that was made, we don't see them out and about. Not that you maybe always will, but it's really about controlling how we can perform the service.
Got it. Thank you.
And just a side note, particularly with various types of sprays for this, they're very, very, a lot of them are very time, very timely. I mean, you have to do them within small windows where you're waiting for somebody else to do them. You don't have the flexibility, wind, rain, so you, you got to work around all these things. And having a piece of equipment gives you that flexibility to be able to do all those things.
And it also gives you the control to be able to choose more environmentally friendly chemicals rather than.
Or less.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we're using Roundup, y'all.
Oh, so you can go join that lawsuit?
Strike that from the record.
The goal would be to use this piece of equipment monthly, similar to any contractual service, and more as needed. So this was already put in the budget. The second item is the Z Turf Z Aerate Commercial Aerator. That's a mouthful. But essentially, it's going to give us the opportunity to help facilitate aeration at ballfields, parkland and city facilities. And we're very excited about getting this in-house so that we can actually move forward with decreasing the time spent aerating because the commercial aerator is bigger and can do more at one time.
And Kristoff's back there.
I did not say that.
So is this a tine-type, drag behind a tractor type?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, and I just, I'm not saying yes, no, anything, but I know that there's two pretty good pieces of aeration equipment out there. There's an airway I know that, now I don't, you know, it's been sitting a while, but that's a really functional, good piece of equipment. And when I looked at it, it looked like it needed a coat of paint and some grease and that was about it, so.
Really? Where is this?
It's, it's, it's in the bone pile out there.
You may not know how to use it. I don't know.
They may not.
Because it's on a replacement list and I don't know which one it is.
Well, there's actually two different, it says airway on it, it's a big yellow, big yellow thing.
Yes, it's currently on the replacement list, but happy to look into it.
It's hilarious. I find this hilarious, okay? Because I, I mean, I've been a part of, this is my seventh budget stuff, but seventh budget presentation now in RALET, and previously, previous leadership, none of y'all here, we would converse about getting an aerator. It's like, oh, it's, it's so expensive, it's just, it's like going to be $100,000, it wouldn't work. We just, seriously, seriously. And then to hear that we actually have always, apparently, according to you.
Got at least one, you might have two.
That is just case in point why we have, yeah, case, case in point.
And that's fine, but like, it's, let's, let's take a little bit of a look at it. Because it's, I know it's back there because I.
Yeah, but 14,000 for.
Detail on it with the parks group.
And if we have more than one, that's even better, so. But I, I don't know when the last time we've ever even aerated a single field in the city.
Well, with that machine, it's been a long time, I guarantee you.
Well, we're going to change that. All righty. And then the last item I have before you is facilities overnight cleaning at RCC. This is something that is important to the maintenance team. So that you're aware of, this proposal is actually to have contract labor fund, the funding is for, to have contract labor to assist with the cleaning on-off hours. So currently, the facilities team is using two full-time staff to serve the RCC. You can see their schedules before you, one's in the morning and one's in the evening. Also, we work between Monday all the way through Saturday. There is not currently anyone there on Sundays. And when the hours of operation have a lot of individuals that are currently there, it's very difficult to clean because there's people coming in and out. It's difficult to clean not only the, the individual pieces of equipment, the gyms, the restrooms, the locker rooms, but we felt like it would make more sense to have an outside company come in at night and clean the building when it's not occupied. They would use as many people as necessary to quee, to clean as quickly as possible to complete those tasks. We would still use city staff during the day to porter the building, make sure there's trash picked up, toilet paper, paper towels, and, and minimal impact cleaning that needs to happen. But this FTE could be spread amongst other individuals, the ones that are currently associated with the RCC. So that you're aware of, we currently have seven cleaning staff that are cleaning 11 different buildings within the city. And so I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. So this is just a new idea of how to facilitate cleaning. Brittany can speak from experience because she obviously is at the RCC more often than most with managing that team. But this is something that we thought might actually give a benefit and that cleaning can actually happen in times that is not heavily populated and actually there's no one there present.
Is this just for inside the building?
That is correct.
Can we do something on a fairly routine, routine basis about at least knocking the cobwebs down off the windows on the outside?
We sure can.
Every time I go up there, it's covered all the time and it does not look good.
Absolutely. We can get on that today.
Fish flies. So is outsourcing this less expensive than hiring a person who would work a night shift to do a cleaning?
We currently do not have any individuals that are slated to work night shift and we found that it's difficult to get individuals. The goal with the actual group would be that they could have, whether it be two people, four people, whatever it would be, that we could contract with them to come in and physically do that cleaning versus having one individual that might take a larger, a longer period of time. As far as the staff of the individual, estimate of a individual who's currently serving that FTE, it's about $34,000 a year for their salary. But if I go back to that building maintenance technician, you can kind of see those are very similar salaries.
I think this is a very good idea.
What happens with the two FTEs that are currently cleaning the building now? They get reabsorbed back into the parks budget or into Public Works or?
They would stay, it would be my recommendation that they would stay within the facilities team and that would provide for greater service that could be provided to the other 11 city buildings or 10 city buildings. And then you would still need individuals there through the times that you see to porter the building from 5:00 AM until 9:00 PM when the facility's open. You'll still have to have trash picked up, you'll still have to have toilet paper, paper towels. If there was a large spill or any kind of cleaning that needs to happen, we would still send facility staff over there to actually do those cleanings and they would still run a regular route. It just might be that they're there part-time versus full-time or come back and forth throughout the day, maybe hit it two or three times a day versus staying there throughout the day.
Is there any thought to outsourcing any of our other facilities where, where possible? I understand some have sensitive information and stuff like that, but.
We have not evaluated that, but always open to that.
You said two of these have been approved, one was the Z spray, what was the other?
The aerator.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, community development. I'm getting tired.
I'm new here, so I didn't have to go first, but I don't know if going last is any better really, but.
Oh, you're last.
I'll get the library.
All righty, here. So our supplemental request from community development, we have one for your consideration. This is for an additional position in code enforcement and a vehicle in the first year to go along with that position. The current structure in the code portion of community development is Janet, who's the neighborhood services manager, has five code officers, equal positions that work underneath her. They each have an area assigned that's, it's not geographically one-fifth, but a portion of the city that's assigned to them. Adding in this additional position would allow some restructuring to essentially shift to four areas within the city. And that fifth position of the current positions that we have would go into a focus on commercial code and also focus on some short-term rental, heavier enforcement or monitoring of short-term rentals, rather. And the new, new position would essentially be pulling out responsibilities from that whole team of five for single-family rental inspections. That is a new, I guess, programmatic area that they have taken on this year in February that came into code from building inspections. Building inspections was completing these residential, single-family inspections prior to it coming over to code. However, they were only inspecting for life safety issues. Code, when it came into their department, have kind of stepped up the level of inspections on those homes to also include, as the code says, you will, enforcement of really any nuisance issues, international property maintenance code. So they're looking at things like, is there paint on the outside of the home that needs to be fixed up or do we have, you know, sidewalk issues in front of the home, that sort of thing? So there's, there's.
Should have always been, I can't even believe that, that we weren't even doing that.
If that's an accurate statement, that shouldn't have been, they should have always been looking at that. Those are not new regulations.
Yeah, our, our building official, who was actually one of the inspectors who did this previously, said they were told in more than five or 10 minutes in and out, kind of get it done. So they were looking at, you know, the safety issues, right? Like, let's make sure we're not going to let the house burn down, that sort of thing. But they weren't impacting, or they weren't really looking at the aesthetic qualities. So I know Janet shared with us a week or so ago, one of the resident, one of the owners said, I'm glad you made me fix that up because it looks so much better now. So I bet their neighbors probably feel the same way, too. When I made this pitch a little while back to the executive team, I didn't have all the stats together, which I have learned is very, very important here. So I don't have a huge history of information, but kind of looking back at last year, March, April timeframe versus this year, the, the total number of open cases in code enforcement have gone up by 23% in one year. I don't know that that's, you know, a, anything other, so the current open cases, sorry, the current cases from March and April went from 1,142 to 1,402. That's just in a two-month period. Similarly, complaints in code enforcement for that same time period went from 294 to 375, which was a 28% increase. So we're obviously seeing a significant increase in activity just in code alone, which I think would be substantial and, and maybe, or maybe not, support an additional position. But the, the increase of the residential inspection into code in addition to the increase But the increase of the residential inspection into code, in addition to the increase in code, is a pretty, pretty significant, so. That's what our goal is for requesting this additional position. We believe that we'd be able to kind of focus more on the commercial code, like I said, and also the short-term rentals and multifamily, which we have not really been focusing on.
Has there been a particular driver in the increase in cases? Is it mostly against SDRs and mostly against multifamily or mostly against businesses or is it just kind of across the board?
So surprisingly, all of the complaints and proactive on commercial code has stayed almost exactly the same last year to this year. The only increase that I've seen is related to residential and it's going to be your common code issues, strong vehicles, grass and weeds, fence complaints. It's really, it's no different from one year to the next. I don't know if the number of complaints has stemmed from, we're still, I think, performing a similar number of proactive, initiating proactive cases, so I don't know that it's, that we're not doing proactive stuff. So I really couldn't tell you if we're just, we have a higher bar now and people are used to.
So I appreciate you going into that. I know that you're new. The information that I'd like to have sent to council eventually is how often, I guess, question is proactivity. How many times have our code enforcement officers created a call for service? Are they doing grid patrols through the city to be proactive? Or are they just simply responding and being reactive every time? They're just going to calls, not actually, you know?
Why don't we do this?
Yeah.
I don't think it's a bad idea because, you know, and I don't want to pick on code. In fairness, I started my career as a code person. But I think it would be worth a quick presentation to the council in a work session to kind of get a state of, if you will.
That would be lovely.
Yeah.
So I think it's something that impacts, it's a hugely important part of the community people don't often recognize. We only think of police and fire, but we can get public works code. And I'm not being funny, and the impact that they have, right?
Y'all get my emails about code issues all the time.
I get them all the time, trust me. So I think it would be worthwhile because I think there is also a lot of stuff that they're doing that we may not know. And so I think it will fill, give a complete picture if we can, in a very near future, next meeting or two, just get a state of.
Because having five code officers, I mean, to me, twenty square miles.
Yeah, it's not bad.
It's not bad.
And so I, in fairness, I don't, you know, I don't oppose hardly any of these and I don't, I don't really support them all either, but some of them I support more than others.
Yeah.
Right? I don't know how I feel about this one and that's why Cory, I was like, I don't have any data, so this is DOA to me because I don't have any data.
That's kind of how I feel is, I, that's why I'm like, okay, I want to get that information because I feel like, okay, maybe not this year, but next year after we know or even.
So, okay, I'm going to sabotage Cory a little bit, and I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. That's fine.
But I wanted to provide her some relief to make whatever maneuvers she needs to make in her department. So there is an FTE in her position, in her department, that was, I feel when I looked at the organization there, they were overloaded with administrative help. Some of the project management and slight administrative duties that are typical for planners and other professionals in those kinds of departments were not being absorbed. Cory has, to her credit, recognized that and begun moving some of those tasks into that area. Point being that there is an FTE that will not be filled, that she has at her disposal to allocate as she sees fit. Except administrative.
He totally sabotaged you.
Did I? I actually tried to.
He's got a plan for those, that position.
So she, she, really what I'm saying is I'm giving her the power to choose the destiny of her department.
Wow, you just sunk that ship.
Well, here, on the other hand, I'm always transparent with this council, am I not, right?
Yep, I appreciate that.
And so have you allocate this position, all I'm going to do is take that one, so. You may want to give her something else. Well, interns are great, but they don't need to be supported on that. We can use, we can pay them from somewhere else if we need to.
I think the idea of a work session is a really good one. I'd like to, I'd like for us to talk about the whole.
Yeah, because I think there's a lot code does that people don't recognize. And I think it'd be a great opportunity for them to see that.
Also, I think, set some priorities as to what, what we really want focused on in terms of enforcement. I want us to enforce the code. I don't want us to turn into one of those cities where if your grass is half an inch higher than whatever the limit is, then harass the resident.
I will be very candid. You place code in a very precarious position. And I would have to speak against that because our code in that respect is prescriptive. I don't know if it's twelve inches or ten, but it's always prescriptive. It's not discretionary in that regard. And then you place code in a position where they're going to be castigated for being prejudiced or biased or. When it's prescriptive, it's prescriptive. Conversely, to your point, there are a lot of subjective things. And I think it would be beneficial if the council could articulate kind of an order of preference, if you will. But if the grass ordinance requires that you cut it at ten inches, and that's what it is, and they have an obligation, remember, they don't give you a citation, visit one. They give you a notice. And so I don't want to go too far, but I think it would be beneficial to hear.
You know what I'm saying.
I do, and I think that would be part of the benefit so that they can have a sense of what's important to this council.
Yeah.
Everything is, but prioritization helps.
And maybe we'll need to look at the ordinances, too.
I would say another, another, this is a, this is a sour point for me. And you know this very well because I'll email you about it. But the dang signs scattered through the city on the weekend, just, it's like a pet peeve. I just get tired of it.
Credit to code, you know, they tweaked and they've got a weekend crew now.
Oh, but they do, okay.
They do, and I will give them credit. I was.
I haven't seen any signs recently.
Weekend, I saw a code person just driving around touring, so they are working on weekends.
Love it. There was a point, y'all, where they weren't working on weekends and that would be when all the code violations happened.
Credit to Janet and staff, they quickly tweaked their scheduling and they have adjusted. And they've had it now a month and a half, maybe two, if not two.
That must be why I haven't seen as many signs.
Well, that is why.
Also inform them, if another position were approved, there would be some anticipation of evening hours as well because we have some evening, especially in the commercial, commercial areas.
I would like to say, however, that I do think that focusing on the rentals is important. That is, that is something, the single-family rental market really does concern me very much. I, I really would love to figure out, you know, I. Home ownership is, private homeownership, to me, is always the goal. But there, there seems to be a lot of single-family rentals going on, and I think that we really do need to keep an eye on that.
How would we do that?
Well, if they get inspected.
It's enforcement through the ordinance that's passed.
Yeah, if I could expand on that though a little bit, I guess my bigger concern and what we hear from the city all the time is the short-term rentals. That's, that's the big code issue right now. I don't want to do anything that takes away from staying on top of that.
You could even allocate two positions. You have that authority. Let me be clear. If they're concerned, because there is a capacity question at some point.
He just like pendulum.
Let me ask, because there are arguments that you can make because, listen, this is a lot of work when you, and it's about level of enforcement, right? There's one thing to say we've gone out and then there's another, and it's the next level when you talk about heightened, focused, proactive enforcement. And so that's for you to tell us. So if you really want this heightened level of attention and focus on the rental market, well, then you probably should dedicate one position. If you want a heightened level of focus on the commercial sector, then you probably need to dedicate one position.
Well, I do look forward to a work session because I'd like to understand. My, my guess, it's probably less on the proactive side right now than it is on getting a call from someone. You go up and down Rallett Road, especially south of Miller, and it could be rental houses, but some of the grass is that high and I haven't seen much happening there, so.
And again, you may not see it, doesn't mean they're not doing it. And that's the thing that will be beneficial to this presentation is people understand that code is a very slow-moving glacial in its pace. Our obligation is to make sure we're taking some timely action and we can show you that when you ask it. So how about we do this? Of course, you can determine if you want to give us one or two or none at all, and we can, of course.
It sounds like she's already got one.
She does. Well, she does what is left to her, but we will come back. Let's aim for the same time that we have the conversation about the models and bring this conversation and kind of dovetail it into that because you may decide to allocate more positions at that time.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Library, last one? All right. Library.
This is so funny.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for this opportunity. I don't have a supplemental request, but I do have a discussion that I want to have with you about library fines. As part of the budget preparation for fiscal '25, the library looked at the eighteen comparable cities that the, that Rallett uses as a benchmark. And out of those eighteen cities, twelve are not charging fines. And then when you look further past that, there are, on the slide, thirty-six different North Texas libraries that have gone fine-free. Kind of in the vein of this trend, in 2019, the American Library Association passed a resolution asserting that fines create a barrier to library usage and urging libraries to remove fines. Currently, Rallett Public Library charges twenty cents per day per item for overdue materials. Fines max out at ten dollars. And once your account, your library account, has fines or fees above five dollars, you are blocked from checking out further materials, using the computers, using electronic materials. The reason why other libraries have decided to go fine-free, there's a couple of different reasons. There's cost, customer service, and the library's mission. So when you think about costs, EFR circulation assistants who process the fines and collect the fines, if they earn on average sixteen sixty-two an hour or twenty-eight cents per minute when they are collecting a fine, which sometimes it can take two or three minutes by the time the person gets the money out of their purse and everything. If they're just paying a twenty-cent fine, a fifty-cent fine, well, we've already paid the employee more to collect and, you know, to collect the fine than what we're actually collecting. And there's also the time that staff spend educating the patrons on their fines, arguing with patrons over their fines. When, the way it would work if we opted to go fine-free is checkout times would remain the same. DVDs would check out for a period of seven days. Books would check out for a period of three weeks. If you don't return your materials, your account would be blocked until you return your materials. Then you could use library services again. What library, what we're currently seeing is, for right now, currently, if you look at what items are overdue, there's about seven hundred and twenty-five items today that are overdue at the library. That's a cost of about ninety-five hundred dollars, and the average item is thirteen dollars. So I have this thirteen-dollar book and I have ten dollars in fines. So I can return the thirteen-dollar book and pay ten dollars in fines and keep using the library, or I can just keep this thirteen-dollar book and not have to pay anything further. What we're seeing is a lot of people will opt for the latter option. They'll just keep the city's materials, not use the library anymore, not check out books for their kids anymore because they don't want to pay this fine. Fines, libraries have found that fines are not a good way to motivate people to return materials and that blocking and charging fines actually disproportionately affect low-income families who stand to benefit the most from using library resources. You may remember from some of my previous presentations, over seventy percent of all incarcerated individuals read at or below a fourth grade level. That is Charlotte's Web, not a super-complex book. And so ensuring that your citizens can read Charlotte's Web or things more complex is a long-term strategy in public safety and economic development. Libraries who have eliminated fines have experienced increases in the returns of long-overdue books and increases in patrons using, returning to use the library services. The Chicago Public Library System, when they eliminated fines, they saw a two-hundred-and-forty percent increase in the materials checked out. More locally, Sanger Public Library, when they discontinued fines, the next year they saw over five thousand more items circulated. McKinney Library, when they eliminated fines, they saw over fifty thousand more items circulated the next year. An organization called Libraries Connected conducted a survey in March of '22. The libraries polled who eliminated fines, forty percent saw an increase in adults using the library after eliminating the fines. Thirty percent saw an increase in families and disadvantaged people using the library, economically disadvantaged people. And then twenty percent saw an increase in the use of the library from the age group of five to sixteen-year-olds. So we just wanted to bring this to your attention and see if you would be amenable to the idea of Rallett Library no longer charging fines. As you can also see on the slide, the amount that we have collected in revenue in fines has decreased over the years. It took a big hit in, from fiscal 2019 to 2020. That is when our software vendor implemented an automatic renewal system where patrons' items would automatically renew without them even having to call the library or do anything. So we were hoping to be able to implement this, to bring back people who have been avoiding us because they owe us money, and to also encourage people who are hesitant to use the library because, you know, they may have to pay a fine later on to encourage them to use our services.
Laura, how many times does the auto-renew happen before a?
Two times.
Material is delinquent. Two times?
Two times, unless somebody has requested an item. If somebody is waiting for the item, it won't renew anymore.
Got it. So it could be up to nine weeks potentially if no one has requested an item, that an item could be checked out before it's delinquent?
Yes.
Well, I fully support this.
So are people notified that it has or hasn't been automatically renewed?
Yes, yes. They get, they get a warning, your item is about to be due, and then they get a notification, the library has renewed or has not been able to renew your books.
Does that send via email or how?
It's up to the patron's choice. There's email, there's text.
I'm good. Counsel?
Yeah.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For supplemental requests, and let's take another break. Let's do ten minutes. Be back here at 2:15. Thank you.
The next works here we have for you is opportunities. The reason why we put this third is that, you know, in order of what we had to fit into the plan, these are the ones we'll look for opportunities to fit into the plan if there are things you've identified that we should fund based on your priorities. So, you know, we do have a limitation on what we can afford.
That's right.
And this comes down to, if we can afford these, we'll pop them in based on the priority you give us. So we've got two questions here. One is, should we fund it?
That's right.
It's a yes or no. If we get four yeses on this, then that means we start adding that into the column. So if you give us a yes, then give us a priority. If you give us a no, you don't need to give us a priority because we already know it's a zero.
Current rankings here, are those staff's rankings or are those rankings from the department? For example, the.
From the department.
From the department.
Yeah, the police department, most of these, you'll see, are from the police department.
That's their number-one rank.
That's correct. They've ranked them in their order of priority. You have descriptions from them as well in your materials of what these asks are for. It's completely possible, there are a couple of these where we have some question marks about whether they're capital-eligible. So that doesn't mean they won't get funded. It means that they may not be funded through a capital account. They may have to fund it through another methodology if there's something the council supports.
Well, and again, these are wish list items. I don't want anyone to go, just because police and fire, or police mostly are saying it's there. With due respect to my dear chief, they've got what they need to operate. This is stuff that, hey, if we ask them, if you could just get what you want, what would it be? Doesn't mean you don't give it to them, but I don't even want to think, gosh, police department can't operate if I don't give them these things. You know, but they may have a little more fun or operate at a slightly higher level if you do.
So if there really was a Senate clause?
There is, and it looks like seven different people in the room and.
So you say priority.
How many ones can we use?
Long as somebody's.
As many as you like.
Okay.
All right.
You said priority one through three, so do we only select three to fund or?
No, those are your priorities. It's, you just give it what you think is an important rank, just as the.
Can you give me another one then?
Absolutely.
One is most important.
Yeah, but you know, if you only choose to fund four things and you can make it.
Right, we're not ranking them. We're just.
Yeah.
So can we get some context around some of these?
Well, I was just going to ask.
I was going to say.
Okay, all right. Hold on.
I pushed it out here so we could actually say to stakeholders to figure out exactly what we need to handle in that post. Because those conversations between the public works and the entities involved weren't exactly, haven't exactly occurred, we were thinking too. So that was a lot of the reason why I asked to push it out here, so that we could sit down and have those conversations. I do think one more is too many, we can't get a command post. Most of the conversation has centered around, like, self-propelled vehicles. We're also looking at perhaps trailer or pull behind options that might save us some funds. The thing is, we're actually going to get to R and D across all the departments that are going to be involved.
So, thank you. Question regarding, well, my questions are surrounding the police request, because there's only one fat request, and I know what that's about. So, traffic diesel truck, y'all, my understanding, received a truck last year. Is this a second truck? Like, are y'all wanting a second truck?
No, I believe this is, so I believe we have a truck.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think it is suited to tow the trailer that we have. That's my understanding.
That's great. Wow, so we just got it last year, and we didn't, I know it's not y'all, it's Fleet, but clearly didn't spec it right, so, okay. And then the, the, the Pharaoh, I know we got one a couple years ago through the CVE Fund. Is that just to have a second one?
Yes, it would be for a second one, but I believe the first one is out of warranty.
Okay.
So it would give us a second one. It's out of warranty and has new technology as well. So this one can also be purchased through the CVE Fund.
Okay, that was going to be my suggestion, is that fund tends to creep up quite a bit every year, and we have to send money back to the state. I know finance hates dealing with this, but I think this, if we've purchased the, the one that we got two, two years ago out of CVE, I'd suggest that if we were going to get another Pharaoh, that it come out of the same exact fund.
Yes.
And what does that do?
Crimes, traffic investigations, it could also be used for other crime scenes, yeah.
Gives us a 3D digital model of any fatal accident scenes, or any crime scene, for that matter.
The Durango, is that, what is that for?
So this would be a, this would be a vehicle, a second vehicle for a PSU team. Current, with the two officers we got, we got one vehicle, we have a supervisor, two officers, and from existing staffing, within the next year, we anticipate on adding positions to that unit. We won't be asking for additional officers, which would include a request for another vehicle. This would be from existing staffing. So when we do that, we're going to need a vehicle, a non-marked vehicle.
And the camera trailer?
Camera trailer, that's the mobile surveillance camera unit that we've been talking about for some time. It's got the big boom with the flashing lights, and really gives us a video capability that we don't have now for any special events, any crime reduction efforts that we have, parks, wherever we're having a problem area, we would be able to move that camera unit around, generator and solar-based. So that is, we have put in for a grant for that. We're kind of in the final stages. It moved on to sort of the final stage of approval, so we're hoping that that gets grant-funded, but we have it in here in case it does not.
The repair to the padded cell at the jail, is that a, just fixing the problems that it has, or is that redoing the interior? Because I know it's in pretty bad shape.
It's fixing, I believe, the problems that we have with the flooring now.
Okay.
Yeah. Particularly in the padded room.
Yeah.
Spider tech?
Spider tech, yes. So this is a new technology that's utilized by some of our partner agencies. That is one of the most exciting pieces of integrated software that I've ever seen. When you talk about a system that would improve our overall level of service to the community, this is it. ALMP utilizes this and swears by it. It's been a game changer for them. It's not only improved communication with the public with regards to any 911 calls for service. Think about it, if you call 911 and the officers are delayed, we can program it to send a text message to the citizen that, hey, the officer's on a priority call, they're going to be delayed. After every call for service, the citizen would get a survey on the officer. So much like buying more cameras, that changes the scope of how our officers treat people because they know they're on camera, in a way, this would do that as well with surveys. It's integrated into our CAT system, so it isn't, it's a big, it's a big deal for victim notifications. We actually have applied for a grant for this as well that we did not get this year. There wasn't a lot of funding for it in the first year. Victim notifications are a big deal. So case updates, things like when you're the victim of a crime and you're waiting for, you haven't heard from the officer, detective, in a while, it's now all automated. So you would get a very professional automated email and/or text message that says there's an update to your case. You can go see what that update is, i.e. the warrant was approved, or the district attorney's office approved your case, or denied your case. So it would be almost instantaneous updates, instead of waiting for a phone call from the detective who's on vacation, and then you haven't heard from the detective, and you're playing phone tag, or you're calling communications, because that's who everybody calls when they want to go to the police department, is they call communications to try to get information about their case. Highly automated survey system, drastically improved communication with the public related to cause of progress, but also case updates.
And you know what? Let me interject here. This should have been an enhancement and a disservice to the chief, and really everyone. This is not a one-time purchase, you see the ongoing costs. We should have included this as an enhancement. So I would ask that if you want to consider this, please do, but this shouldn't be on this list as a, as a, as a one-time capital purchase. It may not even be capital-eligible, we're not sure, I know. But more importantly, it's not to say that this isn't a good thing, be clear. What I'm saying is, it's not categorized properly, and that's our fault. We should have had this as a, as an enhancement that you could consider, and you still can, right? If you want to fund this, if enough of you want to say this is just the greatest thing since cats meow, and you want to fund it.
That's not great.
The dogs bark.
Yeah, there we go.
Then, then it should be an enhancement. But wouldn't be fair to, and not, again, this isn't chief, his colleagues, that he really gets a yearly enhancement here through what should be a one-time purchase. And we should have caught that beforehand. I didn't catch that either.
And one last thing, chief, is speed trailer?
Yes, speed trailer. So we have, we have two speed trailers currently. They're, they're 100% of the time out in the community, deployed with the amount of traffic issues and/or complaints that we get to do speed studies in various areas. It just gives us additional capacity to do those. There's also improvements, of course, in the technology with the speed trailers now. So this is the larger speed trailer, not like the speed signs, those gather data as well. This is the actual trailer that we deploy out to a problem area, like most recently was
Toller Ridge.
Thank you, Toller. We've done seven speed studies alone on Toller utilizing these speed trailers. They give us lots and lots of data that the traffic engineers then can go through and analyze, and we get to use the heck out of these.
So it's looking at capacity and speed?
It looks at volume, speed, gives us the average speed, lets us know if we actually have a speeding problem. We get lots of complaints from the community that thinks that there's actually a speeding problem, but once we deploy the trailer and we get seven days, 14 days of data, it actually tells us if we truly do have a problem, or maybe it's more of a problem with the volume or the design of the road. The traffic engineers, Gary is very well-versed, I've already, it's a pleasure to have him because he's got a lot of experience in that, and he can look at those studies and go, whoa, actually, we need to look at some traffic calming measures, and speeding's not the problem.
So do you ever pull anybody over, and their excuse was, well, I was speeding because of the design of the road?
That's a good one, though.
I gotta use that next.
Try that out sometime.
Yeah, hey, I would have, would have been speeding, but the design of the road.
I think it has a lot to do with neighborhoods being used as shortcuts.
Yeah.
Because happens all the time at Dalrock and 66, right? People going southbound on Dalrock, don't want to wait to go toward Rockwall, so they cut down those neighborhood streets over to Scenic, and it just turns into a hot mess because there's one street that literally goes all the way through, and it becomes a raceway. I mean, people were going 40 because that's what they're going on a major thoroughfare, so they do it in the neighborhood, too.
Yeah, I love those trailers.
They feel very responsive in the neighborhoods, like, oh, you're doing something.
What's really alarming is when you track, like, the highest speed, like you said, because I remember when we placed one on a Dalrock curve and caught somebody doing like 125 or something like that, because they were
You gotta get somewhere.
Drifting.
I mean, it's
All right, we ready to submit?
Yep.
We will submit.
You got yours? Three. You didn't submit, you must have
I was trying to think of something.
Probably like that pickup that flipped on Relot Road on Gotham Drive. I can't imagine you going that fast, though.
Thank you. I just know that we're gonna, we're not going to be here till, I don't, there's no way.
That's downhill.
Make it one's in purple and one already gotten out of the truck.
I did mine right. I did mine right.
Did I do something more than one time, or more than three times?
You're not alone.
Really? I did something more than three times?
Yeah.
So, you ready?
Did we fail?
Can I drive this?
He heard you a mile or three, so, and even the motor cycle got, pulled you over here.
All right.
Cough in your ear. Yeah, you too.
Yeah, you're gonna make me sick.
We, we, we checked, okay? So, this is a count if, this, this is what it should look like. Threes all the way down. There's a couple of you who don't have threes all the way down, but
What am I doing? What?
You're getting called out, is what you're doing. See, see the column that says MS?
Yeah.
And has a four there, and a two?
You messed up.
Which one is that?
Just kidding. Can I get mine back? I need to double-check my work. No, 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 there's something wrong with that, I gotta check mine.
So this, this is a golf score, we have all yours here, so if anybody wants to adjust their scores. And also on, on this one right here, Mr. Reeves, you had a blank.
This is not real.
You had a blank?
You had a blank on the trail. But you hadn't used a three, so we put a three in there. So here's what this does, it shows us, this is golf, right? So low score is good. So this, the greens are the ones that are below average, whereas there, ranked higher on average. Nine, of course, is pretty low score, so if you're going to golf, that's a pretty high priority. Seventeen, eighteen, those are pretty high priorities, seventeen. You can see the numbers that are up in the fifties, 49 or fifties, are, are lower priorities.
Can we go through and then kind of rank them for them so that we can show them?
I didn't do nothing five times.
So versus just kind of read the score, we can go through and go, this is number one, this is number two, based on our weighted system? It may take a few more minutes, but it will be much more clear than going back and back. I know, so
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to do that off-screen or what, I don't know, but it's up to you.
Oh.
I didn't know what I was doing.
How do I get off-screen?
Dad, I told them to group.
Which window's P?
They didn't, that's why it was off.
Well, that's, oh, well, I said to group it.
It's not the screen, there we go.
Did you do it right?
There we go.
Yes.
And then when we're ready, you can check my work.
I'll take it, I'll check it here.
Pass it over there.
Trying to make you look stupid. I ain't stupid.
I didn't do anything wrong, you want me to take it?
Mm-hmm. Fix it, teacher. You got it wrong, you graded it wrong.
That will happen.
Mm-hmm.
That's my whole career in school. I didn't know I got made of it.
All right, what do we do next?
He's gonna rank them.
Okay.
So you can see the order, versus kind of zooming up and down.
Sure. Sort them, that's gonna change it all.
You wanted it first, you rank it long. It was trying just to get us an idea of where you want us to start. He was asking about the street lighting, I said, it's just trying to give us an idea of where you want us to start with.
That's right.
Over the next three years.
And really, this start, this is the focus, and so that was always the danger, showing this is where we're going to start, I mean, this isn't everything we're going to do in three years, this is where we're starting. Next year, we'll tall, year after, we'll tall.
We just can't start at all the perfect point. And then you have to let them know.
Cecil. Cecil.
Direct labor.
That's funny.
The new connoisseur.
Yeah.
Can we not need you know?
Oh, yes. Oh, gosh, no. No, 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 no. Your browser's There you go.
You could have added to the agenda five-minute wall.
Correct.
What is the temperature also?
We're pretty, we're pretty good.
Eighty-nine, and windy.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Windows P. Eighty-nine and windy. P. Hit the duplicate.
It's a real deal.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have the list. Here, here, Mr. Shoup, here, Mr. Rodriguez, this is Okay, priorities. So your first priority is traffic signal controls.
Oh, thanks.
Second priority is street and alley reconstruction.
Okay, very good. Oh, there's two.
We got a tie.
Okay.
Street and alley, that's also street and alley reconstruction.
Well, makes sense.
Um, no other two. Oh, yep, and then the fire is also coming in at a 17, which is a two.
I ranked it out. David, I ranked it out.
Yeah.
Should be proud of me.
So that means our next one's a seven, which is going to be concrete panel replacement.
Good, good.
Eight, which is asphalt repair.
Roads.
Yes.
Nine, which is road construction. Ten, which is traffic signal install at Liberty Grove. Eleven, which is Relot Community Center. Twelve, I think, was up here. Let's see where 12 is. There's another 11, two elevens, streetlights.
Thank y'all.
All right, thirteen is up here, right here.
Yeah, that's important.
Mainest facility. Fourteen is up here. Oh, there's two thirteens, thirteen's also Liberty Grove Road.
You are seeing how mean I am.
Fifteen, which is right here, which is the downtown district infrastructure. Sixteen, let's see where was sixteen, there's, sixteen is the nature trail. Seventeen is erosion control, eighteen is Relot Community Center. Nineteen is
You just passed it.
Good, thank you.
Keep going.
There it is. Parking lot improvements. Uh, let's see, there's 21 right there, which is the Kyloch Launch, launches, let's see where 20 is. Here's 20, is the Chisa Road Design. Twenty-one is the Kyloch Launch, 22 is Lake Front at Pecan Grove. Twenty-three is the floodgate automation, and also sidewalk connectivity. Twenty-five is a screen wall repair. And 26 is Shorewood Park, and also Twin Star Basketball Park, and that is all, so, that's it. Does that sound true?
Y'all understand kind of
Oh, yeah. That's clear. Numbers are the numbers, very clear. Roads.
Roads.
Very clear.
Roads and traffic signals.
Very clear.
Our stations.
Yeah.
Yeah. Year two, just make it 26.
Yeah, we'll get there. We will.
Opportunities, it looks like we've got, you know, four supportive votes on all but three of those.
I'm sorry, what are those? Okay, let's see, all right, go to, yeah, 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 that looks good. Yeah, down. Yeah, down, yeah. Okay, where'd they rank at? Let's see here.
And this, you know, again, a lower score would be a better score, so...
Yeah.
Uh, of the ones that, you know, are supported. So, um, the higher priorities are the command center, uh, the jail, um, the quad.
Where's the Bearcat? Ten. That's okay, we're getting a Bearcat. Yeah, I see it.
Okay. That actually is better.
That looks correct.
Okay. So, we haven't proofed this one yet, so we're gonna go back and reproof it again, but this gives you the idea of sort of how that works.
Should be with the other category. They're actually including that in the list for the council to look at.
I took that off my list.
So, council will look at that list. Look at that item on the other list. Excuse me.
I'm gonna highlight that one here so that, you know, that's gonna make that elsewhere.
Here now.
Alright, so that's one point four million. That's a lot, so...
Yeah. And then, and we're working with three point three reoccurring, and some of that is not...
No, this is all capital though.
Okay, that's right.
This is all capital. This will give us the, the line.
Yeah.
Maybe it all will make it, maybe it all won't.
Right.
We, we're not, we'll, we'll, of course, update you, but we're not sure yet.
Yeah.
So, that's, uh, debt unless anybody has any questions.
Is there a fixed debt capacity that we're aware of that we have per year over the next three years? Cause I kind of tallied up what, and, and I don't think some of it's accurate anymore based on all the, um, ranking that we just went through. But is there a fixed capacity that we have in twenty-twenty-five to issue twenty-six, twenty-seven? Or do we have any idea what that number might be?
My, uh, estimate right now, uh, for this year is three and a half million. For next year, it's one and a half million.
Mi- Michael, when you say this year, you mean twenty-four?
For fiscal twenty-four.
So, combine them both for us.
Fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five is three point five million. For fiscal twenty-six, it's about nine hundred thousand, or, I'm sorry, one point five million. And then fiscal twenty-seven is nine hundred thousand.
But none of that includes the public se- the public safety building, the facilities. You know, what, what does that represent?
So, I've built, based on the assumed tax rate and a growth rate of two percent, I pre-modeled the remaining twenty-three election. And then the seventy-one point, or seventy point nine million of, from the CO and GLs for twenty-four.
So, this is excess?
This is excess.
I modeled in a, a, the seven point one of, of the fire equipment from February over a shorter life. And, um, then calculated, okay, what is our remaining capacity? So, those numbers are our remaining capacity.
Okay. That answers the question.
That helps, yes. So, what are we planning to issue then?
I don't know.
Our existing?
I'll, I'll be candid. I haven't gotten a straight answer on this, and that's why I said from the beginning, we're not prepared to give you an answer yet.
Okay.
So, I'll take all, that's why we wanted the prioritization exercise, and I wanna be clear, please don't hold us to any of these numbers. We have, we'll have to sit down and get a great deal of clarity, cause a lot of this is fluid. They didn't have information. This is gonna help. Part of this, how they structure this debt. Some of this is gonna be shorter term debt. Some of this is gonna be longer term, and this will help them be able to craft that. Once we have that, we can come back July and give you much more, uh, certain answer than what we can give you today.
Right.
I know it's nebulous, but...
As, you know, uh, he says, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces here, and we have to start with what you want. And then we get creative and fit as much of it as we can in there based on the structure and the resources available.
Taking into account operational capacity, cause that's, that's the one constraint.
All of those things. All of those things. This was, this is the exercise to help prioritize. We can't get, any answer we give you now, somebody's gonna hold us to it, and that's why I said from the beginning, we can't.
I've already held you to it. It's written down.
Right. So, so, you know, we will come back with something more certain, and, and, but right now, we needed this prioritization.
Alright, so, now we get into the last stretch, which is going back over pretty much summarization of everything. The resources available, what we want to fund in the budget. And then also, I think, should we start off with the update on PD compensation?
Uh, we, we can. Um, I don't know how you guys have it presented in terms of how, how they're gonna, you have your spreadsheet.
Yes.
Can we put that up though, for now, just to...
Which one?
It's at the very, uh, that fiscal year twenty-five resource allocation tracking. Excel spreadsheet. Just broke down to the three point seven one time, three point three ongoing, and so far, what's in there, we can confirm the items that were discussed and seemed to be consensus for the board commissions and the nonprofit, and then eliminating the senior council department, so we have them so far. And then to the right are all the departmental requests.
Can we get this in an email to us?
Yeah.
Cause the...
Yeah.
Even I have a hard time reading this.
And can we just separate the general, uh, fund budget enhancements with the left one? Are you gonna add that there? Can, can you see this?
I, not even I can see that with these expensive glasses. Y'all can see it?
Mm-hmm.
Not good.
Yikes, I need to go to the eye doctor.
Yeah, I can see it.
Yeah.
But...
Ooh, I think I need to go to the eye doctor. I can't read that. I'm squinting.
And so, finally, this looks a little different than what they presented. We've got one separate community.
Do you think they've just been staring into space the whole time? That's kinda weird.
Yeah, you ranked only one first, and you looked at half. That's the way it submitted it.
So, this isn't, but, but I wanna be clear though, this, this is not the, the...
No, no. And so, why don't we, I thought we were gonna add a line on here somewhere about the police enhancements. Is it there?
Oh, okay.
Scroll down a little bit.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I need to email it.
Where do you, where do you want me to scroll?
Oh, there it is.
There it is. Alright, thank you.
Let's chat about that.
So, I had a conversation with Chief Denning offline, right? This is, uh, this, we've got a proposal, we've got a presentation. If you wanna give it to kind of visually show what this does to those, uh, step plans.
It looks a lot better than that, so, yeah.
Yeah. So, I think it will, will show what that money is gonna be allocated to, what the impact of that money is. And then I'll talk about the money, sir.
Yeah, sir, I'm sorry.
All the way?
Is it O-five there? Number O-five?
Is it in the presentations?
Hold on.
This one? No?
It's out there.
Is that it?
No, move up a little bit. I thought it was all police.
Yeah, there's a police. It's O-five.
It's the old one.
Is that the old one?
Okay.
Same department presentation.
Okay.
Go open to that other folder of that.
Can one of you...
Department presentations?
Yeah.
Bottom.
Think she can hear you now. Okay. It's a, you're gonna hit the highlights of the...
Yeah, so just based on the recommendations, uh, from the last time we presented, we just went in and we added three percent to the first step and to the last step. And then we just spread the money throughout the steps. So, this is what it would look like. Uh, we get us around that eighty thousand mark, and no top officers out there around a hundred and five.
And total cost of that impact is three hundred and fifty thousand?
They've got a few more.
Okay, sorry.
So, we also did that for the sergeants as well, uh, to see what that looks like, and also for the lieutenants. And so, yes, oh, I'm sorry. So, the five-year officer here, uh, we see what that looks like the first time, eighty-two thousand. And then with this new pay scale, would push us up right behind Richardson, uh, right in front of Garland. And then the costs, so originally, we stated six hundred and three thousand for the original, uh, pay plan we presented earlier. So, that would add an additional three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars on top of that. Uh, we did make a minor tweak to the dispatch as well, which was an extra sixty-two hundred dollars.
I like, I like...
So, so here's my, my take on this, right? Obviously, I was very supportive of the first proposal. Numerous meetings with chief and staff and with the association to try to tailor it in a way that they found acceptable. And we feel like we did that to the point of, you know, will this arms race continue? Yes, it will. Does this push us further ahead? Yes, it does. I now have to argue on behalf of all of these other folks who also want some piece of that pie, right? So, I had a conversation with Chief Denning because, again, I found him to generally be very, uh, global in his approach to, to resources. And I said, "Listen, that's, that's a million bucks this year alone for the police department," right? And while we incorporated six hundred thousand of that, when you think about the ongoing revenue of three million dollars, boom, there's ten percent of it right there. And now, you still want additional supplemental enhancements, right? You're asking, and, and it's not to say that they're not necessary. You still want communications officers and rec- records? And records. And so, I said, "Listen, if, if we were saying, 'Let's make a deal where I've gotta be fair and equitable to the, the other departments,' what would you be willing to do?" And I think the answer came back, "Well, if council approved," right, three hundred and thirty-five thousand's kind of priority one. That really helps. Maybe a reduction in the number of communications officers, cause you can't really train them all right, right now anyway, which kind of serves then as an offset. So, you go from a two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar ask to maybe a hundred and eighties, whatever, ask, right? And then half, changing the full-time request for the...
Uh, well, there's the records request.
Right.
It's, it's a full-time position, but changing the quarter master.
Quarter master to part-time. And, and after that, you've gotta decide on the others, because now we've also slid in this technology piece, right? So, I'm gonna argue, be mindful, and it doesn't, in any way, mean police isn't important, but be mindful of how much resource you give. This is a million, and three hundred and thirty-five thousand, and two hundred thousand. And you could spend the whole three million. I mean, it's there for you to spend. Just be mindful, there's the exponential compounding impact of salary and benefits every year, and that's for any of these requests. And that's why I didn't approve any of them. Uh, you saw, if you notice the things that I administratively approved, that had a budgetary impact, they were all one-time purchases, more or less, with very minor ongoing maintenance costs. So... And now, it's, it's up to you to decide how you wanna divvy up that money.
Um, okay, so, I think we go down...
Can you go back to the list, please?
Yep.
So, they can see it. Thank you. I don't know who, I'm looking, cause I...
What list are we?
The last one. I'm, I don't know what we called it.
The resource allocation spreadsheet.
So, let's see, go down to all the number. So, this is assuming to add, okay, all this, add. So, what are we left with out of the the three point seven and one time and three point three and...
Yeah, she, she's gonna, as you, like last year, as you guys decide, if we get enough nod, head nods and all that, she'll move it over and that tally will change.
And what did we decide? Did we, or was the recommendation made not to spend the entire three point seven?
I'm gonna always recommend that you don't spend the enti- it's three point three, really? I'm asking that you don't touch the three point seven unless it's a one-time expenditure. Like a piece of equipment that you want us to purchase, great.
Yeah. I wanna go down the list and talk about what, what our must, like, what do we really want out of this list? And then get that total number, and if it is the, you know, if it takes up all of that three point three, then obviously, we need to have, we need to cut from that. If, if it's not, and done, and our, what we want does not get close to that three point three, then, then we're good.
Mayor, do you wanna read down the list or have us read down that list again as a refresher?
Yeah. So, uh, now, I thought this was gonna be three FTE, so, um...
Which one? The P, communications?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to understand. I think there were some changes in the executive team exercise, right? How you have the one ranked?
Uh, I watched how the executive team ranked it.
Yeah.
So, the executive team ranked it number one for one. For just one position.
For just for one, yeah.
His internal position was not to have all three of them as number one.
Yes.
One, one communication officer was number one priority. Number two priority was a different, something different. And the three priority was the second.
For, for today's practice, do we wanna go ahead and consider that we say three for now? Like, at this moment, let's plug in three communication officers.
I think that makes the most sense.
Yeah, let's just...
It doesn't buy the department very much to just get one
Right.
communications officer. It might help a little bit, but doesn't solve the problem.
I think it's also good just so that we have that number again when we get to the end and we've put what we want in and see that end number. So, let's do worse. Best case scenario, I guess, yes.
The, the little highlight KRB forty K, they are not going to apply.
Correct. They're not.
Okay. I just want...
So, uh, okay, so then we have police, three communication officers, then next is information technology for the public safety systems administrator, dedicated IT to support police and fire. What do y'all think on that? Do y'all wanna fund that this year or...
Yes.
Yeah, I think we...
Yes.
So, I heard a yes on the IT. Are the right people listening to this?
Yes.
I didn't hear four. I hear the one, two, three, four. There we go.
You have, you have what you need.
Got four.
What was that?
Yes for the public safety systems admin for IT. Economic development and community engagement coordinator. So, community engagement coordinator, this is, would be their third. I'm gonna be a, "Let's wait till next year to do that." That's just me?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
That's enough no's. That's more no's.
Public works facilities for a building maintenance technician to assist with building maintenance.
Yes.
I, I think yes, just with only two and all the facilities we have, and they, eight hundred calls, I mean, my goodness. Am I off base?
Yeah. Okay. I, you don't want my two cents. I'm here just to
Okay.
tally it up. My two cents is you should fund that community engagement coordinator. You guys beat us over the head. And again, where it makes on your final list, who knows? It may not make the cut. But you guys beat us over the head about the quality of events. The, I get messages about how we need to enhance our engagement with HOAs and these other things. That staff is working, but they're trying to raise the level, but there is a capacity question. And so, I think if we want that enhanced level of engagement, you should at least consider that. Or, as I said, much like about the code consideration, it's really relative to levels of service and expectations. And so, that's, that's really my offering for any of these positions.
With, with respect to that and that department, I think it needs some time to stabilize, and I think this year's a good time to do that. You can stabilize not only the leadership position, but the new people that have, um, taken root in that department. I think, I think it needs time to stabilize before we figure out. I mean, the whole department in, in itself is a, is somewhat of a new creation within the city. I, I think we need to let that...
And remember, this begins October twenty-twenty-four.
Understood.
You're, you're going into actually you, year two almost of their, the end of year one of their existence. I mean, not, a point well taken, and ultimately, your decision. I just will always wanna, I wanna be on record that, remember, there is a capacity question with that group, and so...
And maybe we need to lower our expectations of that, you know, the events and so forth.
Let's just, let's just go down the, the, the list and see where we fall. Um, let's see. So, we said yes to building maintenance technician. Facilities that were not cleaning contract, uh, for RCC.
I'm a yes on that.
Yeah. I can see the difficulty with only two people in that entire building and us having an expectation of cleanliness and goes back to the whole, we expect this service, but
How many people do you have?
we gotta pay for it, you know?
Well, and, and I just feel like, uh, like the deep cleaning that needs to happen, you know, is difficult to do in the daytime. You can keep the water fountains clean and you can do all of that kinda stuff, but I really, I do believe that that facility is well-used, well-loved, and it does need, it, it does need that level of cleaning.
And I have no argument with that. I just think it might be more cost-effective done by hiring a person to work overnight, an actual city.
What do you think about just for, cause this is gonna be a first round of this go? Cause once we add in the stuff, then we're probably gonna have to cut some stuff too. So, maybe just for the first round, we add it?
I think we should. That's, that's kinda, yeah, a- after city manager sort of opened that up, I, I guess that's sort of more of him going, "A lot of these is..." Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm good with it, knowing that this is just the, the first iteration of a...
And, cause, yeah, cause I mean, like...
So, yeah, no.
I agree. If we add everything in the first round, then there's no point.
Well, let's, let's see. We've, there's, there's one that we haven't added. Okay, um, commu- we've already done that, so we skipped that one. Records clerk, uh, thirty years having the same amount of records clerks, I think I heard enough to...
I think with the, with the volume of, well, open...
I think with the, with the volume of open record press and everything else in the, and I didn't understand exactly how much time it took to redact.
Right.
I think that's a.
Yeah. Totally agree. Okay, did y'all hear that? Okay. Next is code enforcement officer.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of those things that'd be nice to have, but as a priority, I'm not sure.
Yes, those two no's. And what else? Three no, you're a yes.
Can I, can I get some clarity on, we, we, there was a made mention of the short-term rental revenues being a certain amount, 130 some thousand dollars, I think.
Would you be able to address that, please?
In, in the slide presentation about the code enforcement, there was a note about short-term rental permit revenue being 100 and some odd thousand dollars. Is, how much of that's currently being expended on like the software that we're using? The, um.
Don't we contract with someone to manage the?
We do, Rentalscapes.
I don't know the cost of the software offhand. We've got it in the budget detail actually somewhere.
We currently do, and that contract's set to expire, so we're evaluating new software specific for that.
But that cost is really just to fund the position.
Yeah.
I mean, we're already absorbing the cost of the software.
That's just software, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, and we've got a line on them detailed somewhere, I can pull it up if you want, but we already absorbed the cost of the software.
That's separate of the individual.
Rentalscapes is who we contract with, but that is the software.
Family inspection fees and single family inspection fees and there's just so much, it's just more than I think just the one number. Then you can try to get more of that detail for the workshop.
Yeah, and Rentalscapes is the company that we contract with, short-term rental for STRs, for them to track and report.
How long have we had five code enforcement officers?
We had four for the longest time and then some, I feel like early on in my term, we, early on in my term as council member, I feel like we hired another one.
Well, we had, we had four through 2019.
We're going to try to look at the, I'm sorry, we're going to try to look at the FTE count real fast.
Curious with the number, I mean, the amount of growth, number one in STRs, which is a tremendous, I think, responsibility to try to manage. But also the number of just rental properties in general that lead to people maybe not caring for the property as much as a homeowner might.
I think when David kind of said that there's another position that's not, I was.
That's true.
Yeah.
Am I, okay?
Don't forget, you've complained about commercial code enforcement significantly. I, I want to mention that, and I do believe our dear mayor sent me some emails recently about the deficiencies in the code, commercial sector. And, and it is, it is a problem. The commercial sector needs some code enforcement attention. So I, I, even though I'm telling you they have a position, again, this is just about your expectation levels. And it doesn't mean we're not going to try, it doesn't mean we're going to say, well, just forget about it. If we have a capacity issue, we have the obligation to show you that. I don't know that we can fully tell you that now.
Do y'all just want to go ahead and throw it in?
All that said, I think I'm a no.
I agree.
One, two, three no's. One yes, that's four no's. Okay, no it is.
Next is, where are we at? GIS?
GIS.
No. Nope. Okay, uh, did you, I think there was enough.
I'm a no also.
Can I get one more no?
No, no.
Okay, there it is, just so I can hear officially.
Quarter master, uh, I think I heard that the, there was a willingness to take that to a part-time. Uh, is that, does that number, is that the full-time number or the half?
That's a full-time number, right, Chief?
That's right.
So are we, council, y'all want to do full-time or part-time? I think I'm.
I'm opting for full-time, just knowing how much effort needs to be in the evidence and integrity and everything else. I'm, I'm for a full-time.
And keep in mind, Councilman Braden, the, the, the part-time position will give us back our full-time second property and evidence.
Okay.
Right.
So.
This is the, this is the halftime quarter master.
That'd be halftime, no benefits.
Right. Quarter master, part-time.
I'm going to go with part-time first year and then next year, let's reevaluate.
We have an idea what that cost might be as part-time?
Probably around 30-ish thousand. I, I don't have it specifically.
Are y'all getting that finance? Y'all hearing?
Right, halftime quarter master.
I just want to make sure they're catching what we're saying.
They just cut it in half.
Yeah.
Be on the safe side.
Okay, uh, all right, then, already done that. Rallot website, that's already covered, and spider tech software, I mean, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think our chief did a good sell, sales pitch job on that one. So I'm a yes on that. Anybody, anybody a no on that? Okay, I think there's enough yeses. So did y'all get that as well, finance? Yes on the spider tech?
The spider.
Which is 30,000. 10,000 one-time, 25 and 30,000 ongoing. I know, I hate the name of it. Okay. And for grins, can we throw in that police compensation increase?
Sure.
And let's see what that, let's see what that final tally looks like.
It's one time and ongoing.
And then, yeah, how much does this impact our ongoing fund?
They just need a few minutes to.
Yeah, yeah.
Tie it up.
If, if we've hit the, the max, then we need to cut stuff. Just a good practice.
We said three, three communications at a time.
Yes.
Is that, or you scroll down, please?
Yes, that was 6,278 and yes.
Can I ask Chief something, Chris? On the, the quarter master, part-time quarter master?
Oh, that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Would that be a true, single individual working part-time? It's not going to be a full-time employee who's having his duties halved or?
Correct, we would specifically look to hire a part-time.
Okay, it would be a, a part-time individual, wouldn't, okay, that's, that's.
Would, would the intent be for that individual to be the person that's looking at retirement?
Ideally, um, we've kind of already, we just found out about this last week, so I think she's assessing that option. I don't know if she can do without the benefits. That might be the trick, is finding somebody who always does it without benefits.
That's worrying, a retired person might help because, you know.
Or someone who has been since we were bailing.
I thought it was to, any enhancements? Okay. Which one was it? Oh, it's just the opposite, it shouldn't be related back on the question. That's okay, we're just putting, we have. You've heard all the.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that was made very clear. Got to fix that website.
I don't know, they do not.
Yes, redo, I just redid the one for Soto. Everybody hates our website.
Even the new one?
Oh, no, the new one? I think they like it now.
Okay. Civic plus, you know, this. I, I know they're the, basically they own that market for government municipalities.
There's lots of tools that.
Okay.
The website, the, the, the Soto staff just, when they found out exactly how it works, it was really constrained.
Yeah.
And the flexibility of the Civic plus website now.
Yeah.
Looks a lot better, but.
Yeah, I think what we need is better functionality, usability, clarity.
Looking at them on different vendors, but Civic plus is, they've got a whole bunch of different tools. The little question is, will they want charges?
Yeah.
Well, it's also a content question, I think that we all recognize.
The biggest problem is our current website is content.
You know, you could clean it up and have all the pretty tools, but content is bad. We know that.
Sir, the only thing that's not funded on the list are the community engagement coordinator, the code enforcement officer and the GIS.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Sort of make sure we got it.
So. They're just double checking.
Mm-hmm.
Because I want to get a confirmation on that, because it's your screen that's up there. Um, scroll down. Keep scrolling. I'm looking at over here. See all of these requests? I want to go through these to make sure, um, to see which ones we want, they want funded. So scroll up just a little bit. There we go, that's all. I just want to make sure they're able to see that.
Next year.
For sure.
You know, you don't always get better work, but.
Okay, so that's remaining is two point.
I have a schedule on.
Three.
So you only spent a million and?
Oh.
That includes the 300,000?
Mm-hmm.
You guys like seeing steak in front of you.
So with that, we can add the community engagement coordinator and then we'll call it done.
Yay.
And does that full information list look correct?
Uh, where are we at on that? Where's that?
Thousand dollars for animal shelter.
Oh.
The boundary board.
Yeah.
360 for board adjustments.
Let me go back to my notes, give me a second. There was a couple that, remember, we cut. I just want to make sure that I. Arts and humanities is.
Coad, 7,000. Senior.
Uh, yep, that's right. Arts and humanities is correct.
Guy to shelter, 1,000.
Yes.
Shit, we want to go off the buzzer, we're going to have 20,000.
Parks is, yep, that's correct.
It's not up for us.
Coad, yes.
We're going to administer the, the programs. No, it's, well, we're going to administer the programs.
The 30 and the 20.
But they've given it to them for that purpose. So.
Yeah.
We're going to get those pounds, that's something ever.
Yeah, I'm looking at that now.
They're fantastic at that.
Yeah. That is correct as well. Yep, all that's, all that looks good. So council, it appears that the, that's changed since the last, oh, was that adding in the community engagement coordinator? All right, so.
Can we shrink some of those cells so we can kind of see the whole list?
Yeah. So if you look at remaining resources for ongoing, under the ongoing fund, that is now after all of the things we added, plus the community engagement coordinator, that number, the remaining resources is now 2.22 million dollars. So that's after everything that we just added.
Sorry.
Which is still really good and provides us that 2.22 million to go into reserves.
I'm just going to try to bring it up so you can see the balance and list kind of together.
Yeah.
As best we can.
We have her shrink it, we can't, awkward.
Deb, sorry, I spoke with that, will you hear?
Yeah, you can bring the, the tally up, where you're showing the remaining balance.
Oh, you're wanting this hidden.
The remaining, remaining resources, you can either hide or drag that up, however you want to do it. There you go, so they can see it comprehensively.
Is that too small?
Yeah.
Nope. You said no?
It's not too small.
He has better vision than me.
There.
So.
He's got a better vision directly.
Actually, that screen's smaller than that screen, so.
That's true.
Come on, where's she, come on, shoot. There he is, all right.
There he is.
You're good, you're good.
Welcome back.
So the new number, this also includes the third community engagement coordinator. Cause, uh, so with, with all of those enhancements that we added, including the community engagement coordinator, we are left with the remaining resources in the ongoing fund of 2.222 million dollars.
You want to just throw the code officer in there? I mean, if I got to ask for something.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Throw the code officer in there.
Yeah.
Now that we know our available resources.
So this may be the unpopular opinion, but that enhanced police compensation, I think, is not mission critical right now. I think we're already taking substantial, a substantial leap forward in terms of solving that problem.
We always do, and that's the thing, right? We're always going to be, Wiley today is 77, right? We're going to just catch up to them at 77, uh, in October, and by that time, they're now up to 80. And we're just always going to be behind.
They're, they're not going to make another, you know, and you guys do what you want to do, but they're going to make a mid-year adjustment and they're mid-year. And we've asked them this question, and I'm not speaking against it, but I, I also said in, in terms of the resource allocation, this is an arms race. And even when we do 80, someone's going to pass us at some point, and it's happened already. Cities like Carrollton have said enough. They've drawn their line in the sand and they're going to live with the results of that. I'm not saying you do that, I'm saying this is an arms race and some, somewhere somebody's going to stop and say enough's enough.
15% annual attrition. Forty office, 44 officers in three years gone. This is us making a statement that, that we value and are investing in our law enforcement, that we know how important they are, uh, and that we don't want them to go anywhere, we want them to stay.
So you're going to make the same investment in your public works people? Because I will say this.
Is it as competitive?
Well, let me say this, yeah, it is, and I will say this, if you check the market for your public works people, they're on the low end of that spectrum, and we need to get that adjusted, we have in here. And so I'm, I am obviously not anti-police. Chief and I have been negotiating, discussing this from the beginning. Right? I met with the association, nobody dragged me there, I wanted to hear their thoughts. So I am definitely not, this was my budget priority to make sure, I didn't want to ask you for it, I put it in there. And it was important that we worked together to get them a plan that they felt made them market competitive. It wasn't the city manager saying you were market competitive. They said, and I would respect the chief should try to get every penny you give him. But I have an obligation to speak for the entire city. And so I'm saying this, you, you're the final decision maker here, but I have an obligation to speak for those public works people. They are on the low end of the spectrum. We are making a statement for our police department, let's make no mistake about it. Look at where we rank in our competitive scale. Look at where we are, so give, give them whatever you want to give them, but then let's break off some money for public works too. And we'll go back and I'll do an analysis and I will come back. And all I'm arguing for is if we're going to take care of police, let's not forget public works. I was trying to do a kind of an iterative approach because I didn't really know how much money would be there, so I am not arguing against this. I'm saying if we're going to give them this extra 350,000 dollars, can I go get some extra money for public works?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
We'll be back with probably another couple hundred thousand dollars in ongoing costs.
Are you going to include parks?
They're, they are part of public works now, so when I, thank you for that clarification. When I say public works, I'm speaking of the former Parks Maintenance Group and that group that you traditionally saw as your public works group.
Why, why are we spending money that we don't need to spend when an agreement and an arrangement was agreed upon and decided upon by members of the police department through the RPOA and city management? Why are we spending extra above and beyond that just to put a feather in their cap and say, we appreciate you even more than we already appreciate you? I mean.
Because just doing enough isn't enough. Just do, just going by, just doing what, what we always, I've, I've been here seven years and we have the same conversation every single year. Oh, this is going to be enough. And oh, look, and, and future, and, and next year, look at how we compare to the cities. And then we get back here and we're back again at the bottom, back again at the bottom, back again at the bottom, every single year. This is about trying to be actually really competitive, not pretend to be competitive. Not just catching up with the average every single year, just. This, this is about being ahead of the game. All the other cities are having this exact same conversation and they have been, and we haven't.
Which one?
But this is completely reframing the step plan entirely. It affords the officers faster advancement, faster opportunity for earning. And that's another benefit. To me, that is the main benefit. The increase is nice, but what you're giving them really is the opportunity to earn a whole lot more money a lot faster, along with some.
You don't have to switch the screen and show both.
Let's, let's, let's just, let's just get to the point, okay?
Right, so here.
So do, you heard the city manager said, if we're going to do this, let's, let's look at public works. So I think we should look at public works, I think that's fair. We have 2.2 million dollars in available resources.
And then where's the other one?
To make a difference. I don't remember a year that we had. Last year, for example, we had maybe 600,000 dollars in available resources, which that was before we realized that we had a huge landmine, right? This is the first year that we really have something, we can actually do something meaningful, really. So I'm, I'm all in on the, let's go to 350,000 and let's look at public works and evaluate them. You good?
I, yes, although I don't know why, I mean, we haven't done, I don't know why, it's just public works and police. I mean, we haven't, we're, we're not doing a cost of living for the entire city staff, right?
Open range is different.
Yeah.
And that they, they're. And that, they, they're getting an adjustment. Open range is getting an adjustment.